Buenos días, señor Lavonj, gracias señor... ...Lavonj, buenos días a todos, gracias por estas presentaciones, por favor, si hay miembros seleccionadas. El edificio fue muy de pasada sala, porque será reunión, con una sala completa de repleta del público. Hay varios miembros de la familia de nuestro concejal municipal, que se quedan ahora en el día de hoy. Por favor, de pasarles al entramiento, los concejales. Gracias a mucho estallto al señor Kru, al señor Han, al señor Lavonj, señor Misekowsky, por su presencia, gracias. [Música] Muchas gracias, señor concejal municipal. Su atención, porque es un día bastante ocupado, tenemos muchas personas muy distinguidas, acompañados hoy también el alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, está acompañando, me gustaría reconocer ahora al alcalde Han, el concejal municipal. [Aplausos]
Buenos días a todos, es otro gran día en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, como dije previamente tenemos a nuestro gran alcalde aquí, un gran aplauso para el alcalde concejal municipal de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, el alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, un nuevo aplauso, por favor, esta mañana sabe usted, alcalde, sabe usted que todos los asientos en este concejal municipal están ocupados por personas muy especiales, sabe el presidente, el consejo también, nosotros concejales, pero aquí también en estas bancas también hay un grupo de personas aquí en el público muy muy especial, nos gustaría llamar a dos grupos, dos deportes directorio, todos los deportistas de este equipo, por favor, un gran aplauso para ellos. Alcalde, realmente nos preparamos para presentar el presupuesto, sabemos lo importante y todos hablaremos lo más importante y que tiene que estar claro en el puesto, pero lo más importante que un partido de la comunidad donde entrenadores voluntarios dan servicio con voluntarios para preparar estos niños en nuestros deportes, por lo tanto, me da mucha gusto de toda la persona que está aquí. Gracias al concejal de la plaza, al concejal municipal primero, me acercé a acerca de... ...organización llamado PAN, tienen un gran equipo, ganaron su campeonato, quiero felicitar a los equipos de hombres y mujeres por ganar el campeonato de la ciudad, creo que es la primera vez que ambos equipos ganadores provienen del mismo centro de funcionar, por tanto es un gran momento histórico en la historia de la ciudad, ambos ganaron el primer nivel. Después ellos ganaron el campeonato en abril en el parque de Balboa para hacerse los campeones del 1003, obviamente, tal como Tom Lavonj lo mencionó previamente, nuestros coordinadores de funcionar, los asistentes, los chicos, los padres, todos los que hicieron que eso era posible, quiero felicitarles y también quiero reconocer a representantes, a un representante del equipo, del equipo de campeonas de baloncesto. Ella es un miembro de este equipo deportivo, hay un niño ahora representando al equipo de los niños. Muchas gracias, ahora Christian, pasa usted primero, usted es muy lindo, díganos dónde va usted a la escuela, la escuela de Freewell, cuál es su capacidad más admirada como jugador de baloncesto, no lo sé, usted sabe cómo hacer puntos, cierto, si Justin, díganos algo sobre ti. ¿Qué significa representar tu equipo en Pan Pacific para mí, representando a mi equipo ha sido un gran honor, por tanto creo que nuestro campo, nuestra escuela tiene un gran equipo y es muy lindo pasar tiempo en el parque y nos enseñan muchísimas cosas muy interesantes que aplicaremos en el resto de nuestras vidas. Jerry Chambers representando al parque, al director, muchas gracias. Primero me gustaría presentar, no hubiéramos podido hacer esto sin nuestros entrenadores con voluntarios y los padres aquí atrás en las últimas bancas, creo que los padres, todos los padres, estos estudiantes, en el equipo de los niños, no hubiéramos podido haber logrado este éxito, no hubiéramos podido practicar y también los entrenadores con voluntarios, Herman Nash, Daryl Hurst, Reggie Turner, estos son los niños, ahora los entrenadores voluntarios de los niños, Lisa Claiborne, y Antonio Holder, estos son los entrenadores voluntarios que son un gran trabajo también de director principal aquí. Serena Fitz, Serena Fitz, el otro entrenador, conmigo es Tony Hester, encargada del programa de las niñas, muchas gracias. Pasen, todas las personas pasen, todos pasen para acá. Estoy orgullosa de que campeones, son campeones, tienen un lugar para campeones ahí si no lo han visto, vayan a ver el bulevar, es uno de los mejores gimnasios en el país, es un gimnasio público y estoy muy orgullosa, hay dos canchas para baloncesto para cada equipo y para todos visiten, visiten el parque de Pan Pacific, muy buen trabajo, gracias. Como una observación es su presencia, por honrarnos como campeones, le queremos presentar este baloncesto, firmados por todos los campeones, gracias presionada de parte del equipo de las niñas, me gusta, le queremos dar las gracias por este no, para nosotros y nos quiere presentarle con este balón. De parte de nuestro equipo de baloncesto de Pan Pacific queremos que se presenten estos balones firmados por todo nuestro equipo, muchas gracias. Señor presidente, muchas gracias, gracias a los grandes equipos de Pan Pacific, queremos presentarle con este balón. De parte de nuestro equipo de baloncesto de Pan Pacific queremos que se presenten estos balones firmados por todo nuestro equipo, muchas gracias. Gracias, señor presidente, gracias a los grandes equipos de Pan Pacific, queremos presentarle con este balón. De parte de nuestro equipo de baloncesto de Pan Pacific queremos que se presenten estos balones firmados por todo nuestro equipo, muchas gracias. Señor presidente, muchas gracias, presidente temporal, es un gran placer estar aquí para presentar la iniciativa de una ciudad, un libro, es un gran honor presentarles y darles gracias a los patrocinadores, el concejal municipal, la condado, es un gran éxito, elegimos un libro junto con nuestra bibliotecaria, quien recomendó un libro muy lindo para todos los jóvenes escrito por la autora Sandra Cisneros de San Antonio, Texas, The House of Mango Street, uno de estos eventos muy muy emocionantes es que recibió un premio de Guinness en Hallenbach, mil estudiantes leyeron mil palabras a un tiempo del libro The House of Mango, tuvimos varios eventos en toda la ciudad, por lo tanto me gustaría reconocer a estas personas quienes están aquí con nosotros el día de hoy, primero nuestro patrocinador principal SFS, llamado Dave Nichols. Dave, muchas gracias por toda tu asistencia ya por dos años, por tu patrocinamiento, el personalmente de su compañía, Flashman Hiller, Doug Gowie. Susan Kent, la bibliotecaria de nuestra ciudad, gracias Susan, gracias por ayudarnos a elegir este libro, fue un gran éxito de Southwest Airlines, Anastasia O'Neal, muchas gracias. The Coffee Bean y Tealeaf tuvieron varios eventos otorgando, dando café, tazas de café gratis a las personas que se presentaban a estas tiendas de café leyendo este libro, también el coordinador del proyecto para el periódico LA Times, gracias al periódico LA Times por tomar parte de este evento también, muchas gracias de nuevo. La junta directiva de servicios públicos hemos este gran poster que Pamela Prode lo hizo, es una diseñadora gráfica, un gran aplauso para Pamela, miembro de nuestro departamento de servicios públicos municipales. Es ella, una gran artista, es así. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias a todos, también miembros de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, también miembros de la familia de nuestro concejal municipal, que se quedan ahora en el día de hoy, por favor, de pasarles al entramiento, los concejales, gracias a mucho estallto al señor Kru, al señor Han, al señor Lavonj, señor Misekowsky, por su presencia, gracias. [Música] Muchas gracias, señor presidente, muchas gracias, señor presidente, su atención, porque es un día bastante ocupado, tenemos muchas personas muy distinguidas, acompañados hoy también el alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, está acompañando, me gustaría reconocer ahora al alcalde Han, el concejal municipal. [Aplausos] Buenos días a todos, es otro gran día en la ciudad de Los Ángeles, como dije previamente tenemos a nuestro gran alcalde aquí, un gran aplauso para el alcalde concejal municipal de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, el alcalde de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, un nuevo aplauso, por favor, esta mañana sabe usted, alcalde, sabe usted que todos los asientos en este concejal municipal están ocupados por personas muy especiales, sabe el presidente, el consejo también, nosotros concejales, pero aquí también en estas bancas también hay un grupo de personas aquí en el público muy muy especial, me gustaría llamar a dos grupos, dos deportes directorio, todos los deportistas de este equipo, por favor, un gran aplauso para ellos. Alcalde, realmente nos preparamos para presentar el presupuesto, sabemos lo importante y todos hablaremos lo más importante y que tiene que estar claro en el puesto, pero lo más importante que un partido de la comunidad donde entrenadores voluntarios dan servicio con voluntarios para preparar estos niños en nuestros deportes, por lo tanto, me da mucha gusto de toda la persona que está aquí. Gracias al concejal de la plaza, al concejal municipal primero, me acercé a acerca de... ...organización llamado PAN, tienen un gran equipo, ganaron su campeonato, quiero felicitar a los equipos de hombres y mujeres por ganar el campeonato de la ciudad, creo que es la primera vez que ambos equipos ganadores provienen del mismo centro de funcionar, por tanto es un gran momento histórico en la historia de la ciudad, ambos ganaron el primer nivel. Después ellos ganaron el campeonato en abril en el parque de Balboa para hacerse los campeones del 1003, obviamente, tal como Tom Lavonj lo mencionó previamente, nuestros coordinadores de funcionar, los asistentes, los chicos, los padres, todos los que hicieron que eso era posible, quiero felicitarles y también quiero reconocer a representantes, a un representante del equipo, del equipo de campeonas de baloncesto. Ella es un miembro de este equipo deportivo, hay un niño ahora representando al equipo de los niños. Muchas gracias, ahora Christian, pasa usted primero, usted es muy lindo, díganos dónde va usted a la escuela, la escuela de Freewell, cuál es su capacidad más admirada como jugador de baloncesto, no lo sé, usted sabe cómo hacer puntos, cierto, si Justin, díganos algo sobre ti. ¿Qué significa representar tu equipo en Pan Pacific para mí, representando a mi equipo ha sido un gran honor, por tanto creo que nuestro campo, nuestro escuela tiene un gran equipo y es muy lindo pasar tiempo en el parque y nos enseñan muchísimas cosas muy interesantes que aplicaremos en el resto de nuestras vidas. Jerry Chambers representando al parque, al director, muchas gracias. Primero me gustaría presentar, no hubiéramos podido hacer esto sin nuestros entrenadores con voluntarios y los padres aquí atrás en las últimas bancas, creo que los padres, todos los padres, estos estudiantes, en el equipo de los niños, no hubiéramos podido haber logrado este éxito, no hubiéramos podido practicar y también los entrenadores con voluntarios, Herman Nash, Daryl Hurst, Reggie Turner, estos son los niños, ahora los entrenadores voluntarios de los niños, Lisa Claiborne, y Antonio Holder, estos son los entrenadores voluntarios que son un gran trabajo también de director principal aquí. Serena Fitz, Serena Fitz, el otro entrenador, conmigo es Tony Hester, encargada del programa de las niñas, muchas gracias. Pasen, todas las personas pasen, todos pasen para acá. Estoy orgullosa de que campeones, son campeones, tienen un lugar para campeones ahí si no lo han visto, vayan a ver el bulevar, es uno de los mejores gimnasios en el país, es un gimnasio público y estoy muy orgullosa, hay dos canchas para baloncesto para cada equipo y para todos visiten, visiten el parque de Pan Pacific, muy buen trabajo, gracias. Como una observación es su presencia, por honrarnos como campeones, le queremos presentar este baloncesto, firmados por todos los campeones, gracias presionada de parte del equipo de las niñas, me gusta, le queremos dar las gracias por este no, para nosotros y nos quiere presentarle con este balón. De parte de nuestro equipo de baloncesto de Pan Pacific queremos que se presenten estos balones firmados por todo nuestro equipo, muchas gracias. Señor presidente, muchas gracias, un gran aplauso para Pan Pacific y a todos los padres, a todos los profesores, a los entrenadores y a los grandes estudiantes. Iremos atrás para tomar una fotografía. [Risas] Vuestros grandes equipos que en Grand Pacific. Todos salen para tomarse la fotografía, entiendo que el alcalde tiene otra presentación que le gustaría llevar a cabo ahora, por favor, ahorita, entonces permítanme reconocer al alcalde Jim Han. Gracias, señora Misekowsky, presidente temporal, es un gran placer estar aquí para presentar la iniciativa de una ciudad, un libro, es un gran honor presentarles y darles las gracias a los patrocinadores, el concejal municipal, la condado, es un gran éxito, elegimos un libro junto con nuestra bibliotecaria, quien recomendó un libro muy lindo para todos los jóvenes, escrito por la autora Sandra Cisneros de San Antonio, Texas, The House of Mango Street, uno de estos eventos muy muy emocionantes es que recibió un premio de Guinness en Hallenbach, mil estudiantes leyeron mil palabras a un tiempo del libro The House of Mango, tuvimos varios eventos en toda la ciudad, por lo tanto me gustaría reconocer a estas personas quienes están aquí con nosotros el día de hoy, primero nuestro patrocinador principal SFS, llamado Dave Nichols. Dave, muchas gracias por toda tu asistencia ya por dos años, por tu patrocinamiento, el personalmente de su compañía, Flashman Hiller, Doug Gowie. Susan Kent, la bibliotecaria de nuestra ciudad, gracias Susan, gracias por ayudarnos a elegir este libro, fue un gran éxito de Southwest Airlines, Anastasia O'Neal, muchas gracias. The Coffee Bean y Tealeaf tuvieron varios eventos otorgando, dando café, tazas de café gratis a las personas que se presentaban a estas tiendas de café leyendo este libro, también el coordinador del proyecto para el periódico LA Times, gracias al periódico LA Times por tomar parte de este evento también, muchas gracias de nuevo. La junta directiva de servicios públicos hemos este gran poster que Pamela Prode lo hizo, es una diseñadora gráfica, un gran aplauso para Pamela, miembro de nuestro departamento de servicios públicos municipales. Es ella, una gran artista, es así. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias a todos, también miembros de la ciudad de LA UCD, muchas gracias. Tenemos varios estudiantes de LA UCD quienes están con nosotros, está mañana y quienes participaron en un evento donde tuvo que escribir una historia. Distrito E, Andrea Gutierrez. Distrito D, Brenda Calderón. Distrito F, Daniel Foster. Distrito H, Martha Valdez. Distrito I, Jenny Hong. Distrito J, Mario Lopez. Ahora vamos a tener una rifa, nuestro patrocinador de la rifa Southwest, se verán boletos y de vuelta hasta el Antonio para dos y conocerán a Sandra Cisneros si lo desean, por lo tanto, ¿quién me ayudará? Quiero un voluntario porque me ayudé a escoger un boleto para esta rifa de dos boletos de avión y de vuelta a través de Southwest a San Antonio, Texas. ¿Y el ganador? Del viaje y de vuelta a San Antonio, Texas, Jenny Hong, de la preparatoria Manuel High. Felicitaciones. A todos, sí, muchas gracias. Esto fue muy emocionante, muy lindo. Muchas gracias, señor alcalde. Miembros, ahora tenemos varias personas en el público aquí, pienso que ya están preparados para la presentación por el concejal Pacheco. Consejal Pacheco. Señor Pacheco está preparado, creo yo que... Todos salen para tomarse la fotografía, entiendo que el alcalde tiene otra presentación que le gustaría llevar a cabo ahora, por favor, ahorita, entonces permíteme reconocer al alcalde Jim Hahn. Gracias. Sera Misakowski, presidente temporal, es un gran placer estar aquí para presentar la iniciativa de una ciudad, un libro, es un gran honor presentarles y darles las gracias a los patrocinadores que se participaron, a la candidatura, es un gran éxito, elegimos un libro junto con nuestra bibliotecaria, quien recomendó un libro muy lindo para todos los jóvenes, escrito por la autora Sandra Cisneros de San Antonio, Texas. The House of Mango Street, uno de esos eventos muy emocionantes es que recibió un premio de Guinness en Hallenbach. Mil estudiantes leyeron mil palabras a un tiempo del libro The House of Mango Street, tuvimos varios eventos en toda la ciudad y por lo tanto me gustaría reconocer a estas personas quienes están aquí con nosotros el día de hoy. Primero, nuestro patrocinador principal, SBS, llamado Dave Nichols. Muchas gracias por toda tu asistencia, ya por dos años, por tu patrocinamiento, el patrocinamiento de su compañía, Flashman Hiller, Doug Gouy. La bibliotecaria de nuestra ciudad, gracias Susan, gracias por ayudarnos a elegir este libro, fue un gran éxito. De Southwest Airlines, Anastasia O'Neal. Muchas gracias. De Coffee Bean y Tealeaf tuvieron varios eventos otorgando, dando café, tazas de café gratis a las personas que se presentaban a estas tiendas de café, leyendo este libro, también con el don de proyecto para el periódico LA Times, gracias al periódico LA Times por tomar parte de este evento también, muchas gracias de nuevo. La junta directiva de servicios públicos hemos este gran. Poster que Pamela Prody lo hizo, es una diseñadora gráfica, gran aplauso para Pamela, miembro de nuestro departamento de servicios públicos municipales. Es ella, una gran artista, ¿es así? Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias a todos, también miembros de la LAUSD, muchas gracias. Tenemos varios estudiantes de la LAUSD quienes están con nosotros esta mañana y quienes participaron en un evento donde tuve que escribir una historia. Distrito C, Andrea Gutierrez. Distrito D, Brenda Calderón. Distrito F, Daniel Foster. Distrito H, Martha Valdez. Distrito I, Jenny Hong. Distrito J, Mario Lopez. Vamos a tener una rifa, nuestro patrocinador de la rifa Southwest, se verán boletos y de vuelta hasta San Antonio para dos y conocerán a Sandra Cisneros si lo desean, por lo tanto, ¿quién me ayudará? Quiero un voluntario porque me ayudé a escoger un boleto para esta rifa de dos boletos de avión y de vuelta a través de Southwest a San Antonio, Texas. Y el ganador. Del viaje y de vuelta a San Antonio, Texas, Jenny Hong, de la preparatoria Manuel High. Felicitaciones. A todos, sí, muchas gracias. Esto fue muy emocionante, muy lindo. Muchas gracias señor alcalde. Miembros, ahora tenemos varias personas en el público aquí, pienso que ya están preparados para la presentación, por el concejal Pacheco. Consejal Pacheco. Señor Pacheco está preparado, creo yo que. Buenos días señora presidenta y colegas, estoy con ustedes esta mañana como ustedes saben, cuando llegué al Consejo Municipal en 1999 había algo que aún no celebrábamos en cuanto a la diversidad de nuestra comunidad y las personas que contribuyen a nuestra comunidad y estos son todos ya sea que nacieron sordos, se hicieron sordos, se juntaron sordos, como muchos de nosotros casi no podemos escuchar, sabemos que todo esto resulta por la edad avanzada. Por lo tanto, para muy especialmente en mi oficina, uno de los miembros, los hijos de miembro de mi personal también está muda, está sorda, por lo tanto decidimos enfatizar esta categoría en nuestra ciudad y por lo tanto cada mayo celebramos las grandes contribuciones que estos individuos prestan a la ciudad de Los Ángeles, por lo tanto estamos muy orgullosos, también era muchos representantes aquí de diferentes organizaciones y en cada oficina del Consejo Municipal y muchas concisos del distrito participaron. En estos, entonces tuvimos una resolución para una legislación específicamente quien ha estado en los servicios de esta comunidad, es la única congregación, es la única congregación para los sordos, es la iglesia de Holy Angels, Los Ángeles Santos Ángeles, es la única iglesia que da sus servicios y sus misas para los sordos, quiero decir que la ciudad de Los Ángeles quería reconocer y al adoptar esta resolución, por lo tanto reconoce junto con el alcalde, la fiscalía, director de finanzas de contribuciones de la iglesia para los sordos de Holy Angels, ya por dieciséis años de gran liderazgo y dedicación a la comunidad sorda, los residentes de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, por lo tanto de parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles quiero presentarles esta convocatoria a la iglesia de los sordos de Holy Angels, gracias por tomar parte de nuestra ciudad y por cuidar y por su gran afecto a estos niños. Quiero dar las gracias al Consejo Municipal por apoyar nuestro programa, el programa que desarrolla capacidades de liderazgo para las personas sordas católicas y así poder ayudarles a las personas fuera de la comunidad y fuera solo los ángeles su gente. Es ser un de nuestra iglesia, quiero dar las gracias a ustedes por todo es, por esta resolución, para desarrollar nuestras capacidades de liderazgo para las personas sordas también, les quieren dar las gracias a todos ustedes, muchas gracias. Quiero decir gracias a Nip Pacheco porque él siempre ha ayudado a las personas sordas y nunca me olvido de él porque él es muy bueno para nosotros. Muchas gracias a todos ustedes, espero que el siguiente Consejo Municipal les ayude también a las personas sordas porque señor Pacheco nos ha ayudado muchísimo, no más a los sordos sino a toda nuestra comunidad y a todos miembros de nuestra comunidad. Colegas, también deseo reconocer a ciertos líderes en la comunidad, sordos modos, pero antes de hacerlo quiero prestar a su atención, una meta quizás ustedes no sepan esta, pero no tenemos en la ciudad de Los Ángeles ni un teatro, teatro que muestra películas que para que la comunidad sorda muda pueda ir todos los días, todos los fines de semana para mostrar una película, para poder disfrutar con. Bajo esa actoria se habla con diferentes familias, le dirá que hay una red de anuncios caso por caso, un lugar por donde puede encontrar una película. La concejala Perry y yo estamos trabajando con la oficina del CRA, trataremos de identificar, estamos ahorita tratando de buscar el Lime List que está en el centro de Los Ángeles de Figueroa, hablaremos con CRA para ver si podemos cambiar todo el teatro, al menos uno de las pantallas, a una pantalla dedicado para la categoría de la población de sorda muda, pensé que ellos podrían tener un lugar continuo para venir con sus familia para disfrutar películas, estamos trabajando en esto colegas, quizá regresaré después del primero de julio para pedir su apoyo sobre este asunto, señora Perry ya nos ha dado su apoyo cien por ciento y más para este concepto de abrir un teatro de película en el centro de Los Ángeles para los sordos y mudos. También quiero presentarles a Herb Larson, Herb Larson se jubiló de este puesto como director del Centro Nacional para Sordos y Mudos de la Universidad de Cal State Northridge en enero 99, después de cuarenta y dos años en el campo de educación, en el campo académico, actualmente se presenta la junta directiva del Consejo de Los Ángeles para los sordos que ustedes en este campo académico, esta junta directiva está ubicado en Eagle Rock y da servicio a toda la región del sur de California y fue nombrado por el gobernador Wilson para dar servicio en la junta de asesores de California, él fue la primera persona de enseñar a sordos y mudos en California en una escuela en la universidad académica, en el empezó a hacer lectura, inglés y estudios sociales en 1956, él enseñó primaria, secundaria y primaria. Por varios años él fue director de un programa académico en California y ninguno de esos niños estudiantes eran sordos y mudos, él también fue el primero y el único profesional sordo que fue presente y presidente del distrito bajo el programa de para los sordos mudos, él ha recibido su bachillerato en ciencias de Washington DC de parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles y de parte del señor Burns en quien creo yo que su concejal, queremos otorgar este certificado de reconocimiento por su dedicación para el desarrollo y crecimiento de cada individuo sordo y mudo y también para GLAD siglas en inglés, que es uno de miembros de mi comunidad, de mi distrito. Quiero dar las gracias a ustedes por este honor y este reconocimiento especialmente por reconocer GLAD, ese es el con, la organización de Los Ángeles para los sordos, es el centro que más grande en todo el país y personas de todo el mundo tratan de replicar el modelo, la metodología de este programa, estamos muy orgullosos de las personas, de los miembros de la junta directiva quienes merecen este premio más que yo, tenemos su nuevo presidente aquí, nos gustaría presentarle la doctora Patricia Hughes. Ella. Recientemente decidió ser toda la posición en esta organización, hace dos meses gracias por este gran honor y convocatoria, muchas gracias. También me gustaría presentarles al registro de interpretes para los sordos modos del sur de California, para la persona sorda y muda, siglas en inglés, Skid, fue los primeros de otorgar registro para los interpretes para sordomudos. Skid ganó su primera beca por registrar a los interpretes para sorda y muda, sordos y mudos este verano, ya hace poco complementó. Quiero presentarles esto al representante, la representante. Ella es Stephanie Harris, la presidenta y de parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles quiero darles este certificado de reconocimiento al sur de California, registro para los interpretes para los sordos modos del sur de California. Tengo varios estudiantes también que me gustaría reconocer el día de hoy. Tengo un interprete. Quien quiero reconocer de parte del departamento de incapacidad Angela Kaufman. ¿Cómo estás? Nosotros venimos siempre, siempre he estado aquí, ayudándonos de parte del distrito catorce, la ciudad de Los Ángeles, es un gran placer reconocerte por tus grandes esfuerzos y por tus logros, los que han sido un gran valor para individuos con incapacidades para la comunidad sorda y muda y para la ciudad de Los Ángeles, muchas gracias Angela, de parte de la ciudad este certificado de reconocimiento está siendo presentado a ti. También para uno de mis escuelas, con la mucha ustedes saben que Monoma es la escuela primaria de San Antonio, y será desde 1997, uno de los interpretes de ese lugar ha estado trabajando con los sordos y mudos, con nuestros estudiantes, se llama Tracy Hardy, por lo tanto quiero presentarles a Tracy Hardy y darles este reconocimiento por su dedicación a nuestra comunidad. De parte del distrito catorce, la resolución me gustaría presentarle a usted por su dedicación para todos los estudiantes, los sordos y mudos en la escuela primaria Monoma en el Sereno, este certificado de reconocimiento, muchas gracias Tracy. También tengo varios estudiantes, a quien quiero yo presentarles al mismo tiempo. Me gustaría presentarles a estos estudiantes de la escuela primaria Farmdale, Johnson, Deng, Alex, Sanders, Victor Solorzano, Jorge Espinoza y Blanca López, pasen por favor. Victor. Felicitaciones Victor. All right, this is Victor, he also has a profound hearing loss, he is fully included in regular education, he is the top ten of his class, his SAT nine scores are fifteen and ninety-five, he is very focused with his schoolwork, Victor has missed a total of sixty-five school days in the past two years, mainly to medical illness, but was able to keep up with his schoolwork, he is very inquisitive and always likes to ask questions. I just want to tell you Victor, thank you so much for coming today and thank you for being a positive influence in your class and in your school, so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'm going to present you also with certificate of recognition, okay Victor? ¿Eres tú Jorge? Okay, don't go anywhere Victor. Jorge Espinoza, right here, is a first grader, Jorge has a severe to profound hearing loss, this is his first year in fully mainstream, not only is Jorge able to keep up with his hearing peers academically, he's in the top half of his class. Jorge is a great reporter, when his hearing aid or trainer is not working, he is reading that grade and his math skills are slightly above grade level, he's an amazing child and he's able to do what he does with the type of hearing, oh, he is an amazing child considering his hearing loss and what he's able to accomplish despite of his hearing loss, so Jorge, I want to give you also a certificate of recognition for being a leader and showing everyone that you can do it and your friends and everyone in the school knows that they're inspired by your accomplishments, so Jorge, congratulations. Don't go anywhere Jorge. Blanca López is a second grader, hi Blanca, she's only been in school for about a half a year, when she came to our school, she was not speaking well, this is Monoma, Farmdale, she's now speaking in complete sentences, knows what is expected of her and is able to meet those expectations, she's made remarkable growth in her language and academic skills, she's amazing, a bright little girl with a moderate severe hearing loss. Blanca, I just want to tell you on behalf of the fourteenth council district as your council member and on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, keep up the good work and just know, the more you work, the better will be for you, okay, so Blanca, congratulations on being a leader in your school and in your classroom, thank you. All right, want to take one picture with the kids? I also want to bring up from the Alserino Middle School, one of our signing language interpreters and recognize Michelle Tanneri, Michelle, come on up. She's in the middle school at Alserino and gives support to the kids and builds their self-confidence and for that we want to make sure that we recognize her for her contribution to our kids in the fourteenth council district and in the city of Los Angeles, so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I present you with the certificate of recognition, thank you so much Michelle for working in our community. Now at the Alserino Middle School, I have two students, Angel Juárez and Catherine Beltran, so can I bring up the two students, can they come up please? Angel Juárez is a very responsible student, he always inquires from his teachers and staff on what he can do to help, he on a daily basis helps his teachers set up the classroom and lessons, he works with three sixth graders and supervises their tasks, he's grown these past three years and has now become a great role model for his classmates. Angel loves to work and is constantly asking for more assignments, he is conscientious and motivated. Outside of the school, Angel is another Oscar de la Ora, his father enrolled him in boxing classes, he loves talking about his boxing experiences, in school he will do anything to be able to play basketball with his friends, this is another area of his talent in basketball, he shines with his leadership, organizational and social skills, these same characteristics are evident in the classroom as he's present with all the students. For these reasons, we are recognizing Angel as part of our deaf and hard of hearing community and a leader in his school, Alserino Middle School, thank you Angel for being a leader. Also, we're going to do both kids, I want to recognize and bring up Catherine Beltran, is very motivated, studious girl, she is also mainstreamed into all her regular sixth grade classes, she is confident in her ability. She is confident in her abilities and does not rely on the sign language interpreter for much help. A very sweet personality wins Katherine praise from adults and her friends. She is very loving to her parents and her baby sister Bianca. She and her friends recognize that her success comes from the contributions that her mother and father provide her in her upbringing. Katherine, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the 14th Council District, I want to present you with this certificate of recognition for being a leader in El Surino Middle School and for your friends and the other children in the school. Thank you Katherine. Now I want to bring up two students from Wilson High School. I have Alma Rios and Rosio Rodriguez. Oh, come on up. Alma or Rosio?
Rosio.
Alma. Okay. Rosio. Okay, Rosio is a junior and is also part of the hard of hearing and deaf community. She has been mainstream in almost all her classes. Her attendance is very good. She works very hard and completes all of her work and we are recognizing her for enduring and being successful at Wilson High School and being an excellent student and role model for her peers. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Rosio, I want to give you this certificate of recognition.
Thank you.
Alma Rios is a senior. She has been working very hard in school. She is scheduled to attend college in the fall and she wants to be a fashion designer here in the garment industry for the City of Los Angeles. And she is also a role model in her school, at Wilson High School. And I want to present this certificate of recognition to Alma Rios for contributing and being a great individual.
I want to present this certificate of recognition for her contribution and being a great individual in the San Francisco community.
Okay colleagues, I want you to know that this is one of our greatest celebrations in the city. And following council members, let me start with Councilmember LaBanche.
All right, Mr. Pacheco, thank you for all of those presentations. You are now going to call on council members who have individual recognitions for Deaf Awareness Month in their council districts as well. So Mr. LaBanche?
Let's give Councilmember Pacheco a big hand.
Thanks, Consejal Pacheco, for this presentation there.
We have someone very special from the education field. I'm going to call up right now. And Norman Crosser, if you will please join us. Crosser. I got your correction, I read lips. Okay. Good, this is the staff here. I am honored to represent Dennis Stein this morning. Norman Crosser, professor of the College of Pierce in Woodland Hills, California. He's been in teaching deaf, which is so important to have those special teachers who are able to reach out and connect and educate. He's been a teacher of deaf since 1970. He's currently the director of the Department of Deaf and Deafblind. He's a professor of disability in the College of Pierce. He was also nominated for the Hayward Award as a great professor. He received an honor as a professor of the Peace in Pierce. He received 15 different grants of academic funding for improving the ability to teach the deaf and blind in the community. He spent the last 15 years developing computerized programs for the deaf and blind, which is a great attribute. We are moving to the level of informationized computerized. Dennis Stein, he was in the country with us, but he couldn't be with us. He was here this morning, but he asked his personal of the district to present him in this convocatory formed by the board and to present him to Dr. Norman Crosser as a great professor, a person who interests him and has done a great job over the last 15 years. He has had great success, congratulations. I want to thank my two staff members that I have with me, Miriam Gottlieb and Luisa Salka, my disability interpreter and my disability specialist and the rest of my staff and all the students. Thank you very, very much. My personal and personal, my students in the college. Thank you. And also administrator and coordinator. Thank you. I'd also like to call on for the deaf service program at Pierce. Part of the program for the deaf and blind for that special tribute. And also the American Sign Language Interpreter Program at Pierce College, Los Angeles Community College District. So thank you very much for receiving those on behalf of Councilmember Dennis Stein. And Madam President, if I could real quick here. Tina Nauman is sitting here right now. She's from St. Louis, Missouri. She's a wonderful mother. She celebrated her 70th birthday this Sunday. Give her a big hand. She is visiting our fair city with her family. And also what's so important. She's a mother of 11. She has nine boys and two girls. A grandmother of 28. She was born yesterday in Georgia. She is celebrating her 50th wedding anniversary this September. And she is a great mother. And as a role model, has helped several charity organizations with her son standing up right here. I just wanted to catch him quick on the second row and let him get out and enjoy the city of Los Angeles. Please salute Tina Nauman for her special 70-year birthday. 50 years of marriage, 22, 28 grandchildren, 11 children. And all the rest. God bless you Tina.
Thank you, Mr. LaBanche. While we're having that picture taken, can I recognize Mr. Reyes at this time for introduction of some classes?
Thank you very much. We do have two elementary schools with us. They're going to take a tour. So I hope to get them out soon as possible. We have Bucan Elementary, led by Bernice. If you can stand up. I know you're here. We also have Monavista Elementary, led by our teacher Gerard. Please stand up, you're both here. Both of you are here. Stand on up. They are touring City Hall for the first time. They are both from Highland Park. They are instrumental in bringing parents to our environmental services. We want to thank you for that. And the parents. Couldn't be done without Manny Hernandez, who's the president, the historian. Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Thank you Manny for your great work. Enjoy the tour. This is your City Hall. Thank you very much. This is your community hall. Thank you Manny.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. There are other members of the council who do have a resolution on the Deaf Awareness Month. Ms. Grue?
Ms. Grue?
I'm so pleased today to introduce my recipient, Judy Socks. It looks like I pronounced it correctly. As we've been discussed already, this month-long celebration recognizes the culture and heritage and language of people who are deaf. This will strengthen and enrich us as individuals and as a community with different abilities. Judy has done some extraordinary things in her life. She's an invaluable and inspirational volunteer to many of our community's most important causes. Including meeting need with dignity. The Salvation Army. Wildlife on Wheels. Olive View Hospital. Judy is a clerical assistant at Precision Dynamics Corporation, a national leader in technology. And a wonderful company that has been a big community leader and obviously supporting people like Judy. Judy was born with developmental disabilities and hearing impairments, but that has not slowed her down or prevented her from building a meaningful and rewarding life. That's right. That's where you work. That's right, Precision Dynamics. I believe Judy is really a true treasure for our community and know that she has... We know that she has lived with her disabilities but has taken that as a wonderful challenge and educated our community about how you can be an active participant in our city by committing to working with some of our neighborhood groups and so forth. So I am pleased to present this certificate of recognition to Judy Socks. Okay, go Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you Judy. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to add too, when I had the pleasure when I worked at HUD to work on a GLAD project where we had a little bit of a bureaucratic snafu that was not going to let them build their facility and we were able to get the secretary and assistant secretary to come out and say, "We need to have this facility built." It's in Nick Pacheco's district and is a wonderful example of how we can provide dignity in a place where people can live. And I just want to, again, congratulate Judy for her wonderful proclamation and all that she does. Thanks Judy. Thank you, Ms. Grue. Ms. Han?
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I am very pleased to participate in this program this morning. I'm going to try out my signing. My name is Janice Han. I would like to recognize Monique Lyles. Are you Monique? From Harbor City. Monique has been teaching deaf and hard of hearing students since 1989 while studying for her MS degree as a specialist in the subject of communication handicap from the USC John Tracy Clinic. She currently works for LAUSD where she serves in a support role for new teachers. She was awarded Teacher of the Year by Gardena's Professor of the Year for Masonic Lodge for the 1998-199 school year in District 8. And shared with us that she finds it most rewarding when students come back to visit her and have been successful. They are always grateful to have had someone to believe in them. Monique's favorite quote, which she sent me, is "There is always one moment in childhood when the door opens and lets the future in." It's a beautiful quote. Congratulations, Monique.
Thank you for what you do.
I would like to honor next Mark Williams, who's a senior at Narbon High School. And also a Harvard City resident. Mark has overcome many obstacles and challenges in life. Always maintaining a positive attitude. Mark has been recommended as a student of extraordinary achievements by his advisors in the deaf and hard of hearing program. He will be graduating from Narbon in June and will be attending a college in the fall. Congratulations, Mark. Good luck and keep up your great work. But more importantly, keep up your positive attitude.
Mark, congratulations. Keep your positivity. Congratulations. Congratulations. Where are you going to go to college?
Harvard.
Next, I would like to honor Kelly Dobra, who's a senior at San Pedro High School and a fellow San Pedro student. Kelly has also been recognized as a student of extraordinary achievement and will graduate in June. As a child, Kelly participated in many intensive deaf and hard of hearing programs and has overcome her challenges. She has overcome her challenges. Next, Kelly plans on attending a community college to continue her education. Congratulations, Kelly. Wish her great success in the future. Kelly has achieved great success in the future and will overcome any obstacles you might find in life. But it looks like you've done a great job so far. And congratulations on achieving all your successes in life. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Han. Thank you, Ms. Han. I would like to say this on TV for Channel 35, even though it's not here. I want to honor Antonio Nunez, who's a great student at Williston. He's a special education center in San Pedro who could not be here today. Antonio is hard of hearing and faces many challenges. But he's well-liked by his peers and plays on the school's baseball and basketball teams. And is progressing academically. We will give him his certificate later. But thank you all for being here today. I'm so pleased to honor those of you who have really succeeded and achieved success despite of your way. Monique, do you want to say something? I'm very delighted to be here on behalf of many deaf and hard of hearing teachers and professors who have given themselves over the years to see the betterment of our deaf and hard of hearing community. And actually, students like Kelly Dobra, Mark Williams, and Antonio Nunez are the types of students who have made our profession a much better place. Both of you, I wish you good luck. I would like to give my most heartfelt congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Han. Thank you, Ms. Han.
Let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Consejal Padilla for a presentation.
And, well, Mr. Padilla, who is occupied... Madam Chair, could you please call the role? We do have a full council.
Brinson Galanter, Garcetti, Grohan, Holden LaBanche, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wais, Padilla, Ms. Casillas. We're presenting a complete, señor presidente. Thank you, señor Padilla. Sylvia Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Muchas gracias, colegas. And I especially want to commend Councilmember Nick Pacheco, who for the last three, four years has been a champion, a champion for the efforts of the deaf and blind in the city of Los Angeles. Who is part of the city of Los Angeles and a part of many, many families in the city of Los Angeles. It's a great pleasure to recognize, as I've said previously, the señora Sylvia Rodriguez, who lives in my district, in 1993. She founded the Trevor Rodriguez. Her son has been a champion in the northern part of the valley in various areas, primarily in the schools. She has given her service as a great activist for the rights of the children and the families of the deaf and blind. She has been a great champion, a champion educating parents about their rights and actually her family. She is a leader, a founder in this field. And I personally feel it's a heartache because she has worked with the local authorities at local levels to ensure that there are classes of catechism that is offered for the deaf and blind to participate spiritually, not just c bibically. In the ministry of the deaf and blind, Sylvia Rodriguez is a great partner of Sylvia Rodriguez's charity. I would like to acknowledge her. She is a person who has a great interest and is a transpirational in the northern part of the valley in the city of Los Angeles. Sylvia, I present to you this certificate of appreciation. Of appreciation. Muchas gracias. I would like to say thank you. For this recognition, for the program of the deaf and blind in our districts. And I want to send a message to the parents of these children. They need to learn their rights. They need to know, know their rights. They need to be activists for these children because they are the best activists that they can have. Thank you. And I want to thank Peggy Huber. She has been the interpreter for the new deaf ministry that we started for children in our area. Thank you. She has been the interpreter for the deaf and blind in our area.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Let me recognize Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Consejal Ed Reyes.
Good morning, council.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias. Can I ask Danny Ochoa and Richard Barrios?
Danny Ochoa and Richard Barrios. Passen, por favor, al micrófono.
Come on down.
Pase.
Today, we are joined by two individuals. I'd like to relive a bit of a...
Me gustaría decir algo sobre ellos y sobre sus contribuciones.
Danny Ochoa.
Danny Ochoa, ¿quién es Danny? Danny, ponte acá.
Danny Ochoa ha mostrado un gran mejoramiento durante los tres años que ha estado como estudiante en la escuela primaria de Los Ángeles. At that time, he was in all special classes. But from seventh and eighth grade, Danny was mainstream in regular ed. Classes with a sign language interpreter. Danny demonstrated his capability to work independently in regular education. Classes receiving excellent grades. He is a well behaved, quiet student who puts forth a tremendous effort. Both Danny and his parents can be credited for his success. Danny, it's a great pleasure to give you the certificate of recognition for all your accomplishments.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. One more.
Yes, also with us is Richard Barrios. Come on, Richard. Richard Barrios is an exceptional student. Has been consistently successful in his academic and social skills. Richard is a pleasant young man around his family, classmates, and teachers. He loves to run track and play basketball. Recently, he received a first place trophy in running a marathon to raise money for his church and community. He is helpful and respectful to everyone that knows him. Richard is mainly popular for his great sense of humor that he inherited from his father. Everyone in his life is proud of him. Richard, congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Reyes. Mr. Parks.
Madam President, just a quick to introduce people in the audience before Mr. Parks does his presentation. Here we also have two schools visiting from CD14. Can I have them stand up from Annandale Elementary School, the fifth grade? All right, they're in the back of the room.
Están atrás del edificio, la profesora Paula, mi asistente Juan López, y de la escuela primaria de York, el quinto grado. Escuela primaria de York, la profesora Helen Lescano, el voluntario Vanessa Reese. Presente, el consejo de la comunidad Manny Hernández hizo estos arreglos para que ellos siguieran a un representante del ayuntamiento, para que vinieran a la excursión aquí de Highland Park. Gracias por traer estas clases aquí, disfruten sus excursiones. Gracias señor Parks. Gracias señor presidente, me gustaría pedir, tenemos 21 estudiantes aquí, de la escuela primaria de Mountain Avenida. Pase con los tres administradores que vienen con ellos el día de hoy. Y les estamos prestando este honor a ellos el día de hoy. Durante este mes para los sordos porque esta es la única escuela de educación especial en nuestro distrito. Es la única escuela en todo el distrito de la UCD. Ellos junto con la vecindad local dan servicios a la comunidad, tienen diferentes cursos académicos. También tienen cursos transacionales. Sus carreras tienen 25 profesores, 25 también sus sordas. Tienen diferentes laboratorios y programas después de la escuela. También también de la preparatoria, ofrecen educación para adultos, por lo que tengo el certificado para cuando de los 21 estudiantes. Bernard pase, dos certificados. Nico Chan pase. Nico, felicitaciones. Adelante con tu gran trabajo. A mí me gustaría pedir a Pablo Guerrero.
Morella, pass. Cayen Tai. Ashley Sutton. Next is Nomi Vargas. Jesse Hernandez. Marvina Cole. Latoya Harris. Rosa Linda Calderón. Tanya Gonzales. Myra Madrigal. Moses Vargas. Maymay Pan. Gabrielle Velasquez. Carolyn Ventura. Wanda Lacour. Salvatore Scolaro. Salvatore, congratulations. Gustavo Estrada. Pablo Castello. Have one of the advisors, you want to say something?
On behalf of the school principal, Cecilia Perez, she couldn't be here with us because she's been preparing for Marlton School's Staff Appreciation Day. So she wanted to thank all of you for picking Marlton, which is one of several schools that are under the Department of Public Works, and they'll be coming next year to do that. So thank you all.
Final thing, if I could ask each of the council members, we're gonna have a little demonstration. If you hold your hand up with these two fingers up and the thumb and face the Marlton Avenue School and say, "We love you." Thank you very much. We'll come back. But you're gonna go in the back? You're gonna go in the back?
Yeah, we're going in the back.
Yeah, so we're gonna go in the back.
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues.
Cuando estoy aquí con...
The honorary for my district, Dina Sussmanchak, and her special assistant, Sarah Sussmanchak. I don't know if you can see on TV, but she's right here.
Ella está aquí con nosotros, sí pasa. Ella merece esa televisión. Quiero decir una historia acerca de Dina porque es una situación muy, muy especial. Dina es miembro de una congregación ortodoxa en mi distrito. Hay esos individuos ahí que necesitaban temporalmente tener interpretes. Y se les informó que la única, el único lugar donde podían ir para servicios para personas judías, estaba muy lejos, era una sinagoga reformada. Por lo tanto, temporalmente Dina inició este servicio para ellos y ahora ella se está interpretando regularmente en esta sinagoga, está usted todos los sábados. Todos los sábados ella es interprete. Y ahora se va a extender su servicio, han sido necesitados en todas las otras áreas. Tiene una gran experiencia en toda la comunidad. Y por lo tanto es una gran talento que usted tiene, que usted está probando a personas en la comunidad. Dándoles la oportunidad a esas personas tener esta interpretación dentro de un campo donde personas casi nunca reciben. Es algo extraño, por lo tanto, usted es un gran líder y pionero en la comunidad, pesa mucho todo su trabajo y queremos presentarle usted este certificado. En esta ocasión tan importante le doy felicitaciones y muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
It's a genuine pleasure to be involved in neighbor sessions that you enjoy every day.
Una profesión, la cual yo disfruto de hacer.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and thank you to everyone here who's made recognition of initiatives in their district to help promote Debt Awareness Month throughout the city for the good of all of our communities, to be aware and helpful for a number of our citizens. Thank you.
Aló señora Caliente, para otra presentación.
Members of the council, it's my very great pleasure to do a kind of repeat performance here. Some of you may remember that last year when I represented a different part of the city, we introduced in council and thanked a formerly dry cleaner, now wet cleaner from the community of Venice. And I'm happy to tell you that she is not alone. And we're here today to give a good earthkeeping award to Mr. Eli, now I'm making sure I pronounce it right.
Gishon.
Gishon, that's what I thought. Mr. Eli Gishon, who owns Eli's Airport Cleaners in the San Fernando Valley and who has made the transition, I think we're going to see more of, from the typical formula for dry cleaning, which involves some very nasty chemicals, to what is called wet cleaning, which does not involve nasty chemicals. And so, we wanted to thank him for his efforts to do a healthier job for his own staff and his own business, as well as his customers and for the whole environment. Because the less we use, the less, the often we use toxic chemicals, the healthier all of us, including the planet, will be. And so, I'm very proud and pleased to present this good earthkeeping award from the city of Los Angeles to Mr. Eli Gishon. Smile. But don't go away yet. As you know, not everybody in the city, not every dry cleaner in the city, has yet heard about wet cleaning. Preposterous as that may seem. It's not that preposterous. This is a relatively new thing. And so, I'm also proud to recognize today, as I believe I have done in the past, with another good earthkeeping award, the Pollution Prevention Education and Research Center, which has done so much and continues to do so much to help businesses in our community learn about technologies that will enable them to carry on their businesses, make a good living, contribute to the community, and save the environment all at once. So Angela, this is for you. Hold on, turn it the other way. Come in the picture. Okay, now, either of you would like to say something? It is your opportunity. Be my guest.
I appreciate very much the award is being given to me. Being a wet cleaner is a win-win situation. Number one, we're not using any toxic chemicals, clothes do not smell, customers are happy, employees are healthy, we're helping the environment. But in addition to that, being a city council, you probably will appreciate to find out that doing a wet cleaning is much less expensive than dry cleaning. It saves a lot of energy in both gas and electric. And, as I said, it cleans everything that dry cleaners clean. And all you council member, you should look and find out who was the wet cleaner near you and give them your business. Thank you very much.
So tell them the location of yours.
Our location is on the corner of Havenhurst and Sherman Way in Van Nuys. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to present Angela Namgun from the Pollution Prevention Education and Research Center at Occidental College for a few words.
Thank you. Our center actually assisted eight cleaners in the region, including Mr. Gishon here, to switch to professional wet cleaner and become a demonstration site for this technology. And actually, three of our cleaners are located here in the city of Los Angeles, including Van Nuys, Venice, and Eagle Rock. And now that we have all these demonstration sites operating, we would really like to use them. So we encourage the city to educate cleaners about this technology and also encourage cleaners to come to a demonstration site. Right now, South Coast Equality Management District is giving $10,000 to cleaners purchasing wet cleaning equipment. So the more cleaners that come to a demonstration site, the more cleaners that are gonna take advantage of this opportunity. So we'd like to thank the city for this hour. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now come in the back and we do a thank you. Thank you. Members, if we can at this time, I'd like to, well, let me recognize Ms. Perry, who's walking to the podium. Ms. Perry for presentation? And then after Ms. Perry, before we continue with a few more, I would like to at least run through the agenda for those items that are not going to be called special, so we can act on those items today.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and if you want, after this one, we can take a quick break. I wanted to ask Albert Torres to come and join us. Okay, okay, great. It's great to have Albert Torres here today. And this is the second time he's been recognized for his work and all that he and the Salsa Congress do to keep Latin music and dance alive for all of us. I think many of you remember the first time he was here in this chambers. He was brought here by Councilman Nate Holden, who I think regaled us with a dance also. I don't know if he's gonna do that today. Anyways, especially exciting as we approach the date of the fifth annual West Coast Salsa Congress to be held May 21st to the 25th. It's an amazing event and brings international visitors, music and dance to the west coast. It is held in Los Angeles and is the world's largest salsa congress and attracts aficionados from places far and wide. In the past, West Coast salsa has had salsa spectators from as far away as Antarctica. En el pasado, el salsa del sur ha tenido espectadores de salsa desde lejos como Antártida, con asistentes de más de 30 países, miles de bailarinas de todo el país para celebrar esta arte de baile y diversidad cultural. Está dedicado a crear unidad a través de salsa. En el pasado, muchos celebridades locales del sur y políticos, incluidos Andy Garcia y nuestro propio consejo de Nate Holden, Jimmy Smits, Elliot Gould, Nicolás González y Eva Longoria, han participado en el congreso. También me gustaría mencionar, aunque tuvo que irse, a Chris Haywood de Los Ángeles Inc., que está aquí también para homenajear los esfuerzos de Albert y el Salsa Congress y para agradecerle por ayudarnos a promover Los Ángeles y a atrar más visitantes internacionales a nuestra ciudad. Y estoy emocionada de presentar a Albert Torres aquí hoy. Y lo presentaré con un certificado. Y tiene un pequeño premio para ustedes, creo.
Muchas gracias. Primero quiero agradecer a la señora Perry por reconocerme y reconocer el trabajo que estamos haciendo. Y quiero agradecer a los miembros del consejo y a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles y al alcalde por este reconocimiento. Nos encantaría poder llevar este evento más cerca de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, el centro de Los Ángeles. Y eso es algo que el consejo de Perry y nuestra compañía y nuestra corporación estamos trabajando. Porque lo que hacemos es crear unidad a través de salsa. Lo que ella explicó es que tenemos individuos de 45 países diferentes viendo este año, 5,000 bailarinas intermedias, avanzadas, algunas de las mejores del mundo, visitando Los Ángeles, muchas de ellas por primera vez, gastando tiempo, energía, dinero para venir a nuestra gran ciudad y queriendo ver lo que es todo. Y va a ser un placer entre el 21 de mayo y el 25 para mostrarles lo que nuestra gran ciudad tiene para ofrecer. Y este es nuestro quinto año haciendo esto y queremos hacerlo por muchos años más. Lo último que me gustaría decir es que quiero dar un saludo a Cynthia Simone, Leonard Stevenson y Johnny Crespo, que no pueden estar aquí debido a problemas de salud, pero están con nosotros en espíritu. Y quienes tenemos aquí son algunos de mis amigos especiales que muestran que esto cubre todas las nacionalidades, todos los edades. Y con la permiso del consejo, les gustaría mostrarles un poco de lo que es salsa, si está bien con ustedes. ¿Es eso sí o no es eso sí de ellos? Bien, lo que nos gustaría es de la persona de audio. Y me encantaría darles una demostración de dos o tres minutos de lo que es salsa. Solo queremos agradecer al consejo por permitirnos hacer esto. Y nuevamente, esto es sobre diversión. Y lo que hacemos es crear unidad a través de salsa. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Albert. Y el año próximo, estamos esperando a que te veamos aquí en el centro de Los Ángeles. Gracias, todos.
Muchas gracias. Y para aquellos de ustedes que solo estuvieron viendo, sí, este es el encuentro del Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Nuestra siguiente presentación será...
Lo siento, señor presidente, solo tengo una rápida pregunta. Para Farmers Insurance. Bien, genial. Bien, Jeffrey Byer, de Farmers Insurance, Sr. Vicepresidente y Chief Communications Officer de Farmers Insurance Group, está aquí con nosotros hoy. Y Tom Labange, sé que está en algún lugar aquí. Bien, Tom Labange, ven aquí, porque el edificio está en realidad ubicado en el cuarto. El 18 de mayo, Farmers Insurance celebrará su 75º Jubilario de Diamond con una gala en su ciudad, Los Ángeles, conmemorando el 3/4 del siglo de la empresa sirviendo las necesidades de tantos de nosotros. Fundado en 1928 en Los Ángeles por Thomas Levy y John C. Tyler, verdaderos empresarios y filan... Filanforistas, Farmers ha crecido de sus inicios humildes a convertirse en el tercer más grande seguro de hogar y automóvil en los Estados Unidos. Farmers es el mayor seguro basado en California, empleando más de 6,000 personas, y ofrece seguros, inversión y otros productos a través de más de 4,000 agentes exclusivos y administradores del distrito. Y Farmers emplea más de 19,000 empleados en todo el país y proporciona productos a través de más de 15,000 agentes exclusivos y administradores del distrito. Los empleados, agentes y administradores del distrito tienen un récord extraordinario de servicio de voluntariado. Farmers tiene un programa de voluntariado llamado Partners in Pride, y une a los empleados, agentes y administradores del distrito para caminar por el March of Dimes, pintar casas para servicios de vivienda de alrededor y educar a los niños. También es un contribuyente a los estudiantes en el programa llamado Servicio a América. Desde su fundación, Farmers ha tenido un fuerte compromiso con las comunidades en las que opera, sirviendo en 2001... Lo siento. Y en 2001, contribuyó 3,5 millones a organizaciones de seguridad no lucrativas en todo el país. Y los empleados mismos hicieron un millón adicional de 1,5 millones. Los ciudadanos de Los Ángeles son tan afortunados de ser servidos por una institución de este calibre. Y Farmers Insurance ha demostrado que es una fuerza fuerte y positiva en nuestras comunidades. Es la única compañía de seguros mayor localizada en Los Ángeles en este momento, con un programa tremendo para niños y sus familias. Así que sé que el consejo de Labange me unirá al reconocer a Farmers Insurance Group muchas contribuciones a nuestra fina ciudad. Felicidades.
Consejo de Perry, yo siento todo lo que dijo y realmente quiero saludar a Farmers Insurance, que también ha sido un gran socio con nosotros en nuestra campaña de Walk America y todo el trabajo con el March of Dimes. Y lo que amo de Farmers Insurance y su distrito aquí es que cuando viajo a la distrito, sus empleados tienen un gran programa de caminar donde los animan a caminar por el alrededor para su propia salud y para tomar una pausa. Espero que todo el mundo tome eso como mensaje para asegurarse de que estén en forma como este tipo justo aquí. Bien. Jeff, ¿quieres decir algo?
Mi primer comentario sería, sí, hagan que el tipo del seguro siga las personas hermosas haciendo salsa, ¿verdad?
Lo siento. Puedes bailar también.
No, estábamos esperando que intentaras obtener una demanda. Solo estamos tratando de ayudarte.
Sí, sí.
Muchas gracias, miembros del consejo, Perry y Labange. Me gustaría decir que hace 75 años que estos dos tipos, Tom Levy y John Tyler, solo unos pocos metros de aquí, tenían la simple idea de tratar de proveer seguros más baratos y mejores para los ciudadanos de Southern California. No creo que... Nos gusta decir que esa visión se fundó en la pensamiento sound y ideales flotantes. No creo que Tom Levy y John Tyler hubieran imaginado que Farmers habrían crecido de esa simple idea en convertirse en la tercer más grande compañía de seguros en América. En nombre de todas las 8,000 personas, en realidad, que trabajan para Farmers en el área de Los Ángeles, nos gustaría presentar a cada miembro del consejo de la ciudad hoy con una copia de nuestro libro de aniversario 75º, que simplemente se llama "Pensamiento Sound y Ideales Flotantes". Muchas gracias por este honor. Y me gustaría mencionar que también estamos proporcionando una copia de esta historia porque no solo es nuestra historia corporativa, sino que realmente paralela a los últimos 75 años de Los Ángeles a cada biblioteca de la ciudad a lo largo de Los Ángeles. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señora Perry, señor Labange. Nuestra siguiente presentación será conducida por el consejo de Reyes. Y mientras él avance y sus grupos avanzan, madame clerk, ¿podemos dispensar con consentimiento los temas? Primera orden de business, por favor.
Aprobación de los minutos.
Señor Park, move. Señora Han, second.
Resoluciones comendatorias de aprobación.
Señor Holden, move. Y señora Gruel, second.
En el reglamento, señor presidente, el tema número tres, es una solicitud de consejo de Perry para continuar con ese tema durante dos semanas, que sería el 30 de mayo.
Miembros, solicitud de continuar con el tema número tres. No hay objeciones. Así ordenado.
El tema número cuatro es la confirmación de que los funcionarios de la ciudad quieren tomar ese tema ahora.
Bueno, mantén eso. Hazlo especial.
El tema número uno es la presentación del presupuesto. Quieren llamarlo especial. El tema número dos es un tema de audiencia pública. Es una propuesta de mejora de la calle en el Distrito 7 del consejo. Y el consejo debería abrir la audiencia. Y si no hay tarjetas para cerrar la audiencia y continuar con el tema hasta el 3 de junio para los resultados de la votación 218.
El tema dos está ahora por delante. No hay tarjetas de orador. La audiencia pública está abierta. Y sin objeciones, continúa hasta el 3 de junio. Siguiente.
Los temas cinco a siete son temas en los que han tenido audiencias públicas.
Y no tengo solicitudes de miembros del público para justificar el consejo sobre estos temas. Miembros, ¿quieren llamar a cualquier especial? Señora Galante. ¿Cualquier especial, cinco, seis o siete?
Señor presidente...
Señor Holden.
Llamaré especial, pero será una discusión. Solo tomará unos cinco minutos cuando llegues a él.
¿Cuál tema?
El número seis, lo siento.
Bien, seis, llamado especial por el señor Holden. En los temas cinco y siete, madame clerk, por favor, abra el rol. Por favor, cierre el rol y tabule el voto.
Trece ayes.
Todos son aprobados. Siguiente.
Los siguientes temas son temas en los que no han tenido audiencias públicas, los temas ocho a doce.
Y tengo tarjetas en el tema 11. Llamaremos especial. En el balance de los temas, no tenemos tarjetas de orador. Las audiencias públicas, por lo tanto, están abiertas y cerradas. Miembros, ¿hay algún especial? Los temas ocho a doce. No hay ninguno. Madame clerk, por favor, abra el rol. En el balance de los temas, por favor, cierre el rol y tabule el voto.
Trece ayes.
Todos son aprobados. Siguiente tema, por favor.
Y eso terminaría el agenda, excepto por los temas llamados especiales, en el reglamento.
Bien, volvamos a las presentaciones. Señor Reyes, gracias por esperar.
Gracias, consejo presidente. Primero, quiero agradecer a estos jóvenes estudiantes por su paciencia. Han estado aquí desde las 10 de la mañana. Y solo quiero agradecerles por su gran cooperación. Miembros del consejo, en agosto de 2002, la construcción comenzó en un intercepción norte-este del proyecto de túnel, el proyecto Nies. La Ciudad de Los Ángeles está construyendo el proyecto Nies para reemplazar el sistema actual, ahora 70 años, que está empezando a deteriorarse en algunos lugares. Este proyecto de túnel Nies es uno de los proyectos más grandes de la historia de Los Ángeles, extendiendo a seis millas del área norte-este, desde la intersección de la 7ª calle y la Boulevard de Mission en Boyle Heights, hasta la intersección de San Fernando Road y la Boulevard de Eagle Rock y el parque Glassaw, corriendo por los barrios de Cypress Park y Lincoln Heights. La ciudad está haciendo todo lo que puede para asegurar que el proyecto Nies sea un éxito utilizando métodos de tubería especial, donde la mayoría de la construcción ocurren 100 pies bajo la tierra. Tres máquinas de tubería especial han sido especialmente diseñadas para el proyecto Nies para drenar los túneles de 8 a 11 pies que van a almacenar el túnel Nies. Miembros del consejo, estas líneas de túnel son tan grandes que puedes conducir esos grandes camiones de basura que tenemos en nuestras calles directamente a través de estos tubos. Así que te da una idea de cuán grande es este túnel. Son capaces de avanzar 100 pies en un día y pueden remover cientos de yardas de material excavado en mucho menos tiempo que los trabajadores harían físicamente con sus tijeras. Las máquinas usan laser de objetivo para lograr la precisión de la excavación, son capaces de excluir cantidades enormes de roca de suelo con vibración de ruido. Miembros, en la historia de la construcción, para aquellos que no lo conozcan, es una tradición que estas máquinas reciben un nombre, un nombre que pueden ser reflejados atractivamente durante el proyecto de construcción. En el pasado, las máquinas han sido comúnmente nombradas después de sus esposas y hijas, el personal de construcción. Sin embargo, para el proyecto Nies, el Departamento de Public Works pensó que sería bueno cambiar a un grupo de más mentes creativas para nombrar estas tres máquinas, y no ofensa al personal de construcción, por supuesto. Pero, ¿qué mejor nombre para nombrar las máquinas? ¿Qué mejor manera de nombrar las máquinas que aquellas que beneficiarán directamente del trabajo que están haciendo? Así que el Departamento lanzó el desafío de nombrar a los niños de Los Ángeles. Entre las escuelas elementarias ubicadas cerca de la ruta Nies, las clases fueron proporcionadas con una foto de una de las máquinas y juntas se convirtieron en un nombre para ella. Muchos nombres fueron enviados al Departamento por las escuelas a lo largo del área y revisados por el personal de Nies. Tres nombres ganadores fueron elegidos, uno para cada máquina, y los nombres fueron pintados en los lados de las máquinas. Así que hoy me da un gran placer traer dos de estas clases a la Ciudad de los Cautos para reconocer y felicitarlos por sus esfuerzos creativos. Darles un aplauso, amigos. En este momento, me da un gran placer presentar este certificado de apreciación a la señora Jean Marie Phillips y sus estudiantes de tercero de grado de la escuela de Hillside Elementary en Lincoln Heights por la contribución del nombre que seleccionaron, y ese nombre es Mighty Mole. Darles un aplauso. También me da un gran placer presentar un certificado de apreciación a la señora Melanie Pruitt y sus estudiantes de kindergarten de la escuela Albino. Sí, es ustedes. Por la contribución del nombre que seleccionaron, y ese nombre es Groundhog. Darles un aplauso.
Somos los campeones.
¿Tenemos a alguien que quisiera hablar? ¿Sí?
Sí.
Ganamos el concierto.
Lo has dicho bien. ¿De Hillside? ¿Dices gracias? ¿No? Oh, no. Los niños querían hablar. Vamos, estudiantes de tercero, podemos hacerlo. Todos somos tontos. Aquí vamos. ¿Quieres venir con el nombre? ¿Por qué viniste con el nombre?
Vine con el nombre porque pensé que era Mighty y podía drenar como un mole.
Ahí tienes. Muchas gracias. Disfruta de la ciudadada. Y nuevamente, muchas gracias por su paciencia. Que tengas un gran día.
Gracias, señor Reyes. Para nuestra siguiente presentación, déjame reconocer al señor Weiss. Bien, miembros, hemos recibido la solicitud de continuar con el tema número 11, que ha sido llamado especial hasta el martes. Eso sería el 20 de mayo. ¿Hay alguna objeción? No hay objeciones. El tema 11 sigue hasta el 20 de martes. Tarjetas de orador enviadas por Larry Green. Por favor, esté adivinado que no actuará en este tema hoy. Señor Weiss.
Gracias, señor presidente. Vamos, chicos. Tenemos... Todos conocen a quién tengo aquí, Laura Trejo, la general administradora del Departamento de Aging, y Edward Woods, el presidente del Consejo en Aging para el departamento de la ciudad. Estamos aquí hoy para reconocer todo lo que hace el departamento para nuestros seniores en la ocasión de Año de los Amigos de los Años. El señor Woods es un voluntario sin parar. Quiero decir, es simplemente extraordinario lo que haces. Tienes un résumé muy largo. Tú eres un miembro electo de la Asamblea del Estado, senador legislativo. Estás en tu segundo mandato. Tienes un certificado en gerontología. Y realmente apreciamos todo lo que haces en base voluntaria y de otra forma para la comunidad. Sabes, nuestra ciudad es la casa de aproximadamente medio millón de personas que son más de la edad de 60. Y la población de los seniores solo va a continuar creciendo. Todos ustedes saben las tendencias demográficas y cómo estamos al final de la bebida y dónde se dirige. Y nuestra ciudad sigue comprometida con hacer todo lo que podemos para satisfacer las necesidades de esta creciente población de los seniores. Y como tal, el departamento hace esfuerzos extraordinarios. Siempre, desafortunadamente, es un año de presupuesto ostero para el departamento, año después, año después. Tienes que hacer frente a mucho menos de lo que todos nosotros deseamos que pudieras tener. Pero haces un trabajo tremendo. Tienes un personal tremendo y apoyo tremendo de todos nosotros aquí en el consejo. Y así, lo que queríamos hacer hoy fue reconocer todo lo que haces en nombre de nuestra población de los seniores, y reconocer y resolver que esto es Año de los Amigos de los Amigos en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Gracias por todo.
En nombre del Consejo de Aging para la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, deseo agradecer al alcalde y al consejo de la ciudad por esta reconocimiento. Nosotros nos remitimos, como Consejo en Aging, a hacer que la calidad de vida de nuestros seniores en esta ciudad brille y no se tarne. Recuerden, cuando piensan en los seniores, están pensando en personas viven, vibrantes que dan de sí mismas, que dan de su conocimiento y su experiencia. Y cuando piensan en los seniores, no piensen en el número de respiraciones que toman. Piensen en las cosas emocionantes de su vida que realmente llevan su respiración. Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Solo quería agradecer al consejo y al alcalde por esta reconocimiento. La Ciudad de... Gran Ciudad de Los Ángeles. The great city of Los Angeles has been built by our mothers, fathers, grandmothers, and grandfathers, and Mr. Woods is a wonderful example of the continuing gift of older adults to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. For, I believe, our final presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Gruel, who has with her a special guest in council chambers. Not sure if this is her first visit or not, but from Northern California, let's welcome State Senator Liz Figueroa.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we also have, and I want to make sure I'm pronouncing it, Cynthia Toussaint? Correct? Okay. Gruel's always hard to pronounce, so I try to be good with that. Today, as Mr. President has announced, we are joined by State Senator Liz Figueroa and Cynthia Toussaint, the co-founder and spokesperson of For Grace to declare the month of May Reflex Sympathetic Dystrophy Syndrome Awareness Month. That's a mouthful, but something that a lot of us are just learning about. And I didn't know much about it until the senator talked to me about how important this issue was and how it impacts so many of us, and particularly women, she was sharing with me just a minute ago. State Senator Figueroa has introduced a similar motion in the state legislature as well, declaring this awareness month. Reflex Sympathetic Dystrophy, commonly known as RSD syndrome, is a progressive, multi-symptom, multi-system neuromuscular and neurovascular disorder, which is a debilitating chronic pain disease simultaneously involving nerves, muscles, blood vessels, skin, bones, and tissue. RSD syndrome can develop after an injury, minor or major, and generally occurs in a limb. Misdiagnosis is constantly a problem for RSD. Many healthcare professionals mistakenly believe RSD is a psychological condition rather than a physical one. Sufferers often develop severe psychological problems secondary to their physical problems. If left untreated, the sufferer can expect a lifetime of pain and disability, financial ruin, social isolation, and depression, which very often leads to the ultimate painkiller, suicide. I truly want to acknowledge Senator Figueroa and Cynthia Toussaint to help raise awareness of this devastating disease. And Councilwoman Hahn and I were chatting about this this morning as well, about its impact, and that we hope by acknowledging this as RSD Awareness Month, that those of you who are watching, those of you here in the room, and my colleagues will understand that this is a serious issue we need to address. So before I introduce Senator Figueroa, I'm going to have my colleague Janice Hahn, if she'd like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gruel, and it's a pleasure to have State Senator Liz Figueroa in our chambers this morning, and Cynthia, thanks for being here as well. And this is true, many people wonder why the city council passes resolutions, and many people say the things we do, passing these resolutions doesn't really matter and doesn't really change things. But I want you to know just, and I read every resolution, I try to, that I sign, and this was really the first time that I had heard of Reflex Sympathetic Dystrophy Syndrome. And so this did exactly what it was supposed to do, which was to make me aware of this disease and make me aware of how it does affect so many people and how there's so much misinformation out there about it. So as my colleague Wendy Gruel said, everyone here today, and there's a lot of people that watch Channel 35, a lot of people watch this every day and see what we do and see what we talk about and follow the resolutions that we pass. So in just this act, I am pleased to say that we will have a lot more people, and hopefully particularly women, who will understand this and will be more direct with their physicians in not taking for granted a misdiagnosis. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Liz. We appreciate the awareness that you're giving this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice. I'd now like to introduce Senator Liz Figueroa, who, as I mentioned, has sponsored this on the state level as well. Senator Figueroa represents the 10th Senate District, which includes Alameda and Santa Clara Counties, cities of Fremont, Hayward, Pleasanton, San Jose, a number of Northern California states and cities. So pleased that she would be here today. She serves on the board of For Grace, and she's been a leader to fight on managed care reform in California. It's my pleasure to introduce Senator Liz Figueroa. Thank you. Thank you.
Es un gran placer estar con todos ustedes aquí en la ciudad de Los Angeles. There's a reason you call the city of angels. It's because you really do see and are blessed with your fortitude and your knowledge and your ability to share the information with others. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to educate the population on this incredible affecting syndrome that I was told about and educated about a few years ago, when this lovely young woman came and said, "Ms. Figueroa, you have to pay attention. You just have to hear what I've gone through." And I said, "I know exactly what you're talking about. They usually tell us it's all in our heads, right?" And she said, "You're right. That's what they've been telling me." And then she started to proceed to tell me her story. And from then on, I am now devoted to grace and to educating myself further and being a spokeswoman for this horrible, horrible syndrome that affects so many of us and primarily women. So ladies and gentlemen, muchas gracias for giving us a few moments to let us know about this project. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Senator Figueroa for all her work in Salvadoran community, Pico Union, Westlake. Throughout the years, I've seen you come to the caress and dinners, to the scat there. I mean, you've been a tremendous asset, a great role model for this great community that contributes so much to our city. Thank you for being there.
Thank you.
And Mr. Holden.
Oops, sir.
Senator, how are you?
Very well.
Wonderful, wonderful. You're doing a good job. And this issue is one that's dear to everyone's heart, even though I understand primarily it's attacked women first and on a regular basis, unfortunately. So we get, raise the interest and the knowledge about what it's all about, what we might do in order to identify it and hopefully cure or prevent the progression of it. I served in your house, and in that position, I was chair of the Select Committee on Genetic Diseases, and it's things that affected women, for the most part. We came up with the amniocentesis test during my tenure, and it was able to provide an opportunity for families to have family planning in that regard. It relates to genetic disorders, hemophilia, cystic fibrosis, Tay-Sachs, Huntington's disease, et cetera. And so I share your concern, and I wish you all the best in your effort to highlight the interest of the people of the state of California, certainly of your legislative body.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Holden. I'd also now like to introduce Cynthia Toussaint. Since her diagnosis in 1995, Cynthia has been very active in the arenas of public speaking to help bring attention to RSD and the problems if misdiagnosed. As the founder of For Grace and a political advocate, for those of you who do not have a voice, she was the motivating force behind an article in the Los Angeles Times in 1998 detailing the disease. In 2001, she spearheaded the first ever California Senate informational hearing on RSD. Cynthia, your courage in the face of such adversity is a true testament to the strength of your character. The selfless way that you've given back to inspire others and to educate others is extraordinary, and we thank you for being here today and would love to have you say a few words. We can do this. Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. Thank you, Senator Figueroa. It is such an honor to be here today, and this is such an exciting day for RSD awareness. Just a few years ago, no one had even heard of Reflex Sympathetic Dystrophy, a disease that is so painful, it leaves its sufferers feeling as though they have literally been doused with gasoline and lit on fire. And here we are today at L.A. City Hall, holding a press conference to announce May as RSD Awareness Month in Los Angeles and California. We have come such a long way. Briefly, my story began over two decades ago when I was a 21-year-old ballerina with a very bright future. Then I suffered a minor ballet injury that turned my storybook life into a living hell. For the first 13 and a half years of my illness, my doctors told me that all of my physical problems were in my head while the disease progressed throughout my entire body, eventually leaving me for 10 years totally bedridden with chronic, intractable, excruciating pain. It did not have to be this way. RSD is so catastrophic, suicide is considered a symptom. This is not acceptable. Because RSD is curable if caught and treated early, my husband, John, and I have founded a nonprofit organization called For Grace to raise awareness of this terrible disease, to stop the needless suffering, and to save lives. Again, Liz, Wendy, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I thank everyone in this room for caring. Your care means the world to me, and it means the world to a community that has suffered for far too long in silence, but not anymore. We are changing the world of RSD together. Thank you very, very much. Thank you again to Senator Figueroa and to Cynthia Toussaint for your efforts. We only hope this will help in a little bit of way to educate people here in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel, with our presentation. Senator Figueroa, thank you for visiting us here in City Hall. I think you're going to be back.
I definitely will be back, and thank you for the wonderful, warm welcome, and I plan to see more of you more often. Thank you.
Great. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Going back to the regular agenda, Mr. President, there is a confirmation of a city official. Item number four is confirmation of Mr. Sarkos Gazarian to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Is Mr. Gazarian still with us? Thank him for having tried his patience here and his date of confirmation. Members, we have a commissioner before us for consideration. Is there any discussion on this item? Public hearing has been held. We have a committee report recommending approval. Members wishing to be heard on confirmation? If not, let's at least give Mr. Gazarian a chance to be in the spotlight. Now, come up to the chair here. And we don't have any members with questions at this time. Public hearing has been held in committee. Mr. Gazarian, in a moment, you will be confirmed. I imagine, I just want to thank you for your volunteerism and your service to the city of Los Angeles. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, you are officially confirmed.
Thank you.
Send this matter forth with, please. We have two items left. Let's take item number six, excuse me, number six left, and leave the budget presentation to be the last item to be taken up by the council today. Madam Clerk.
Item number six was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number six.
Mr. President, members, we're going to continue this for two weeks anyway, so let's let it go.
Okay, members, request to continue item number six for two weeks. That would be May 30th. Seeing no objection, item six is continued, leaving item number one on the special agenda. However, we do have a special meeting agenda that has been posted. Let us temporarily recess the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Brinson, Galanter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Labonch, Mizakowski, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign Padilla, 13 members present, and the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session, and we do have one item on the special meeting agenda. It is a matter that had a public hearing held in committee just two days ago. We have a report before us for consideration. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Is there such a motion? Mr. Holden moves a five-minute public hearing. Without objection, let's proceed then. The council will now hear from Melrose Larry Green, to be followed by Dr. Geraldine Washington, Barbara Ratuf, and Dr. David Horn. If you all could please come forward at this time.
Set my watch for about 35 seconds. I know a lot of people want to talk. This is a motion relative to requiring slavery-era businesses and corporate insurance disclosures from city contractors. Now, the reason why I'm against this, I think this thing passed in Chicago, is because it's unnecessary. I know everybody else is going to be for this, but maybe we should disclose that Mercedes-Benz made the gas to kill German people in World War II. Maybe all Democrats ought to disclose that Santa Robert Burr was a member of the Ku Klux Klan. Or maybe it's time to move on. Slavery happened 145 years ago. Plenty of people have changed. I couldn't even live in the house I live in now in Hancock Park because Jews weren't allowed in there, along with African-Americans and others. I'm giving up my time to the rest of the people. Thank you, I'm Melrose Larry Green. I'm against this.
Thank you very much. Dr. Washington is our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Geraldine Washington, president of the Los Angeles NAACP. I appreciate the opportunity to say one or two words today about this motion. And first and foremost, it is... Thank you. It is important to the African-American community. So I'm simply here to say that the Los Angeles NAACP supports this motion, and we believe that it will go a long way toward the healing that needs to occur. And therefore, I am asking that you approve this motion, pass this motion, and let the healing begin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barbara Ratliff?
Good morning, Barbara Ratliff. I'm an attorney, and I was a person who initially gathered the information together to present to the council here. This disclosure will help African-Americans to reconstruct and reclaim a history that was nearly lost because of 400 years of slavery and another 100 years of legal segregation. It's very interesting, people tell us to move on and to forget about it, but that would put us in denial. It's very important that we know our history. Other people have been compensated for wrongs that have happened to them, but when it comes to African-Americans, we're always told to forget about it and to move on. And it's already been proven that corporations, because of the state insurance code, as of May 2002, insurance companies have been going into their archives and they have been providing information to the state of California with respect to their company's involvement with slavery. This is the same thing that we want to do with this ordinance, not just insurance companies, but all businesses. And it's not going to affect all businesses, because most businesses were not doing business in 1865 or before. So it's just going to be a few businesses, but it's going to be those that were involved in finance, transportation, textiles, that type of thing. When we help black people know their history, we help ourselves to heal, as Dr. Washington said.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
It has been proven in this country that when things are done for black people, when black people benefit, everybody benefits. With technology today, one of the things that I am realizing is that we, today, you in this room, we now can do things. Things happened in our history in the past that we had no control over. We're not pointing fingers at people today to say that they had a blame for what happened to black people 145 years ago. But the point is, everybody who comes to this country today comes for opportunity, and they benefit from the opportunity that has been created over hundreds of years, and black people participated in creating that opportunity when we didn't get a chance to benefit from the free slave labor. So, in concluding, the people who are in this room today, all of us, we have the ability to do something. You are in positions of influence and responsibility. You can do something. In fact, we could change the whole world if we all got together to see the profit in peace. But that's going to take a development of our consciousness, a collective consciousness. But today, you can do it, and this local government can help us collect history and help undo things that are... help undo things that our United States government did not do for us at the time that we were freed. The United States government knew in 1864, 1865, it was discussed in the Congress. I'm not going to read it for you today. I read it on Wednesday. But one of the senators, John Lane of Kansas, stated that the United States had a duty to these people that they were about to free, and the United States government neglected that duty. Now, the people who are in control, you can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, call forward, Dr. David Horn.
Good morning to the city council, and good morning to my elders in the audience, to Mr. Padilla, to Mr. Nate Holden, the maker of the motion, and to my city councilman from the Eighth District, Mr. Parks. The L.A. city council has a tradition of passing legislation that promotes respect for diversity, that promotes justice, and that promotes equal and fair treatment. Now, in that regard, the city council has already passed legislation that, you know, promotes the L.A. Living Wage and Benefits Ordinance, that type of thing. The slavery and business ordinance falls within that tradition. So we're asking the L.A. city council to remember your own tradition and to continue it. Chicago, as we have already been told, has already passed this particular ordinance. New York is contemplating it. The great city of L.A. would become the second-largest city to support this measure. That means we would have the three largest cities in America supporting it. We also need to talk about one other quick thing before I stop. You are going to consider the issue of banks, and whether banks doing business with L.A. will be negatively affected by your passage of this measure. Let me assure you, they will not be. Chicago, which passed the measure in October, has had 500 or more businesses that have complied with it. Not one business has been adversely affected. Not one item has come up that has hindered business as usual. We will continue business as usual. This is not a measure that will hinder business. We're not about punishment. We are about information gathering. We need the information for healing. We need the information for history. We urge the city council to make us proud today, pass this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this period. We are receipt of a number of other speaker cards who have elected to allow the previous speakers to speak on behalf of the entire group. They will be added to the record, but let me read the names of Dr. Eva Holmes, Opal Young, David Austin, Frank Elmore, Mary Alice Jones, Robin June Gatlin, April Lawrence, Terry West Spencer, Gregory Dean Starks, Maurice Griffin, Zainab Samateh, Deborah Hamilton-Starks, Pamela Narcisse, and Eric Warren. Thank you all for being here. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, those individuals whose name you just called, would you just stand and let us know that they're the ones here to supporting this ordinance? Thank you very much for... Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. President, I just want to recall, in 2000, year 2000, we had a former council member, Senator Zimmerman, Margaret Thomas, introduce a motion, which I co-authored along with Ms. Goldberg, Bedilla, Misakowski, and Pacheco, to support a position to require that I turn my telephone off. And what this motion did is that John Conyers had introduced legislation in Congress to set up a commission to study the slavery, those who were slaves and served under slavery for free labor. Mr. President, members, it's the reason why we're here today. Back in 1620, 1619, up until 1865, the African-American today, known as African-American, served as slaves, and they worked for free for their slave masters. There are many businesses and companies that were doing business at that time, in some ways still doing business here today in the city of Los Angeles, and they benefiting from the profits of those who served in slavery for free. All we ask in this motion, that an ordinance be drafted to identify those companies, insurance companies, and other companies that derive their profit from slave labor. Not only of the African-American, I think we can extend it to include the Chinese as well, and other people who suffered during those times. I would say to you that it does us no harm, but it, in fact, reclaims a history, as has already been stated, that has been lost. We also know that a person, or a community, or a country without the knowledge of its history is without pride. And it's not asking too much for us to do that here today. We have participated in the defense of Old Glory, not only in the Civil War, but the Spanish-American War and Indian War. There was a soldier named as the Buffalo Soldiers. Those same Buffalo Soldiers fought to conquer the West, or to win the West, as they did in the Second World War, known as the Ninety-Second Infantry Division. The Buffalo Soldiers. They're all African-American, and I want you to know that the time has come, and is long overdue, that we identify those companies that have done business during the time of slavery, continue to do business and profit from that of slavery, continue to do business here in the city of Los Angeles. It's a fair request, and I hope that we can have unanimous support to make that happen. Now, it's already been mentioned that we're not here today to ask companies to go out of business. We're not here to be punitive. We're here to say, let us know who you are. This is not the first time we've done this. There was apartheid in South Africa, and the city of Los Angeles was out front, they were first, in saying, we will not do business with any company doing business in South Africa at that time. Because of the stand that we took, other cities and other states around the nation took the same very same stand, and as it turned out, now they have a democracy to some degree in South Africa. I was somewhat disappointed to hear Mr. Melrose Larry Green take the position he took, because we, as he states every time he speaks, as relates to his group, he'll say, never again. And that's what we're saying in history. We're here today. When we reclaim our history, it was so devastating to our entire community as a race, we can say too, never again. In closing, Mr. President, in closing, we didn't just stop at taking a motion relating to South Africa, but we also took a motion related to the state of Israel, and the position that we took by unanimous vote in this council, that any company doing business with those who are the enemies of the state of Israel, that we would not, as a city, do business with those companies. So if we can take those two positions, which we have in others, Indonesia, oil as well, we can certainly support this motion, which would require an ordinance in those companies doing business in the city of Los Angeles where there is no punitive, there is no punishment. It's saying, all we want you to do is to disclose. And if they were to decide out of the goodness of their heart, that they would like to come up with some kind of program to pay restitution to the descendants of slaves, the descendants of those who served in servitude without pay, including the Chinese, they can say, ah, these programs are for the inner city. These programs would benefit those who are descendants, and it's not reparation, but it's a program that's going to help us all, whether it be Latinos, whether it be blacks, whether it be bronze, even whites. I say those programs should be considered and put in place. There are many ways we can address the issue of restitution, and I want to repeat, there are many ways in which we can address the issue of restitution, and I hope that we will today by making this start. I ask for an aye vote, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Carey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I was pleased to second this motion for Mr. Holden for a number of reasons, and one of the personal reasons that I wanted to second it was because of my fascination with genealogy and how genealogy can help people reclaim their communities. For some, the concept of slavery in our own country is something that's only for books, or books that we read in school, but I can tell you firsthand that when I was a teenager, I had an uncle who was still alive, although he was well over 100 years old, who had been a slave, and had been a freed man, and still had his papers. And so, from my own life experience, I can tell you that he was a living embodiment of the stain upon our own American history, and so it touches me on a very personal level. But on a more political, global activist level, enabling us to pursue this ordinance will give us the strength and capacity to reach out to companies whom we may know or believe have done business and profited from the slave trade, and enable us, or our council members, to correct past wrongs. And I'm very mindful of thinking of the railroads as I think of that, and the impact of railroads, not only in contaminating the soil and the water in our communities, but the impacts they have in severing our communities from a transportation perspective, but moreover, from an environmental perspective, and the environmental justice issues that we could pursue further with yet an additional tool to do that. So I look forward to working on the drafting of this. I want to applaud the work of the NAACP. And Dr. Washington, thank you for really being very strong and focused and reminding each one of us every time you see us of what we need to do. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to rise and support Nate Holden's motion, and also thank Dr. Washington. For some reason, over the last several hundred years, slavery has been something in which people have wanted to put in the back of their mind, and we even have people debating as to whether you've made full recovery from slavery. But yet, we see other communities talk about the Armenian incident or the Holocaust with a sense of understanding that you cannot prevent issues in the future if you do not clearly understand what happened in the past. I think it is something that's important to realize, that our community may never overcome the bondage of slavery, even though it may not be spoken about on a daily basis. It's important, just on an image issue, if nothing else, if not one dime is recovered, it's important that this city takes a stand and let the community know, like many other cities in the United States, that this is a worthy cause, is something that's important, and it at least gives a sense to an entire community that the city is supportive of something that they desire, but also understand that we never want to repeat the mistakes of the past, that we could treat people so inhuman, that we could sell them, separate them, cause their families not to grow as other families, but to clearly know that it will not necessarily solve any of those problems in the past, it will not repair those damaged families, but it will at least from this day forward, let the community know that something is being done by the city of L.A. that's important as a symbol, if nothing else, that we are supportive of a large community in our city. So thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. When we hear about the voices of the past, it's still present today. When I look at the Braceto program, when I look at the Chinese laborers, and I look at the backs that were broken for the profit of few at the cost of many, I believe the words that have been mentioned by Councilmember Perry are very true. The pain that has been caused upon our community still exists, and I appreciate her observations about the rail tracks, because it's a very simple, in my mind, symbol of that imposition that was put upon those communities that were then deemed undesirable, because where else would they put them? So today, we need to understand that the areas that are park poor, the areas where you find the homelessness, the areas where you find desperation, happen to be in those areas where they put the tracks. So I appreciate the work you're doing. I appreciate the message being sent, and the new stage is being established in how we look at our past for the sake of our children and the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Are there members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Holden, there's important business for us.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the president of the city council, who waived the rules which would permit us the opportunity to discuss this issue, important as it is, today, so we wouldn't have to wait another week or so. So with that, saying that, I want you to give the president of the council a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Thank you, Mr. Holden. True applause will be when we vote on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we vote, I just want to reiterate and once again state that whereas Abraham Lincoln said that we received in 1865, every family forty acres in a mule, which they never paid up, and we're not even asking for that, we're just asking for the support of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Let's send this matter forthwith. This concludes, this concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the regular meeting agenda, Mr. President, is the presentation of the budget.
Okay. Members of the council, members of the public, we can have your attention. The final matter for consideration today is the presentation of the budget. Let me recognize the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, someone who's been busy not just for the last couple of weeks, but for the last couple of years, maintaining the city's fiscal integrity, Councilmember Nick Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, thank you. First of all, I want to start by thanking all of you individually, and especially the council president, for appointing me as chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee two years ago. As many of you know, my term ends on June 30th of this year, so this is the last budget and final budget that I will be presenting to you as chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee. I will tell you that it's been an interesting two years since September 11th. We've had a very challenging time here in the city of Los Angeles, maintaining our fiscal responsibility of being balanced, and at the same time, maintaining the service level that our constituents and residents have depended upon. I will tell you that in the last two years, specifically after September 11th, that has not been the most pleasant committee to come visit and be a part of. Budget and Finance has been tenaciously, under my leadership as the chairman, putting pressure on every department to overcome a $250 million deficit that we went through in the last eighteen months. The departments initially were reluctant to start. I really viewed this as everyone was waiting to see who would be the first one, hoping that it would never get to them, but the problem was so significant that it really impacted every single department in the city of Los Angeles. We deferred expenditures. We maintained the line. In some places, we obviously had the hiring freeze. We had hard hiring freezes. We were very frugal in exemptions. And I do want to also commend every single one of you as a body for not dipping into the reserve fund as it was slowly but surely accumulating, because it was clear that we needed that tone to be maintained throughout the last eighteen months. Because as we find ourselves here and presenting the 03-04 budget, I will tell you that the 03-04 budget right now is balanced. It is balanced in big part with one-time revenue sources. For example, that same reserve fund that you were smart in not dipping into over the last year and a half, it contributes a significant, over $150 or $160 million into balancing 03-04. So I do want to tell you that as we get through... So, I do want to tell you that as we get through 03-04, you have been a part of the solution and have been doing the right thing when it comes to what we are expected in terms of being fiscally responsible. I also want to commend the mayor's staff for maintaining the hard hiring freeze over the managers, and that has also generated a great opportunity for us to get through 03-04. However, colleagues, I do believe that our time is running out in terms of getting through in this sort of hodgepodge of efforts. At this point, the committee really recognized that the 04-05 budget and the structural deficit in the 03-04 budget has to be addressed with some measure. The Budget Committee, working under the Council President and the CLA's Office, proposed reviewed the mayor's budget. You will notice certain changes. Hopefully, all of you have received your summary from the CLA's Office. The Budget Committee voted four to one to adopt the proposed budget as amended by the committee and by the CLA's report on Wednesday. The only highlight I want to bring to your attention, and this is very a simple concept, what the CLA's report does is it moves about $60 million in expenditures for 03-04 into what I have described as a joint checking account. The balance of the budget is maintained and put into what I describe as the cash account. Why is there a significant distinction? It's very simple. Just like cash, you pretty much can spend it as you have it. But with a joint checking account, the council plays a proactive role in making sure we're being fiscally responsible. And in November, December, we have put in place a review to dip into the joint checking account, if prudent and if necessary. So, for those of you who are being told the misinformation and basically the lie that we are not hiring officers, I want to reassure you that for the first six months of next fiscal year, we will have authorized at least 400 new hires. It is the remainder of the fiscal year that is in balance and in the joint checking account, and we will make that determination in November, December. And so, review the report, look at it. If you have any specific questions, I will tell you that it was not an easy budget to adopt from the standpoint that the $60 million that's in the U B includes sidewalk repair, the 10th-member task force, new, I'm sorry, the 10th-member task force, also, let's see, the neighborhood council support, and it's the attorney's office, controllers, postage, our fuel accounts in the general services, construction forces, project fund, field and equipment expenses. Another significant, we're deferring 84 miles of resurfacing of streets. These were not easy decisions on the part of the committee, colleagues. However, everyone felt that the pain had to be shared and distributed to the entire city family, and that is why there was no exemption made for the traditional public safety, police department and fire department. As a family, this budget is being adopted as one where we all share in the burden and responsibility of being prudent. So, I ask for your support. We will be discussing motions and details on Monday, and that is the appropriate time to introduce any motions. I will tell you right now, if you are interested in making a change to what is a balanced budget, if you're going to spend money, you're going to put us out of balance, so you better find the money within the existing budget, or identify additional revenues. So, colleagues, with that, I wanted to present to you where we are with the budget and the state of affairs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. And again, I really commend you for the wonderful job you've done, not just these last couple of weeks, but for the last couple of years. Colleagues, we do have two speaker cards that have been submitted. Let's hear from members of the public next, and then I'll be happy to recognize council members who request to speak. But as a reminder, today is just a presentation of the budget from the committee to the full council. Deliberations and actions on the budget, as recommended by the council, will take place in a special meeting of the city council this Monday. That'll be May 19th. The council calls forward at this time William Jasper, to be followed by Paige Miller, if you can both come forward at this time.
I'm Bill Jasper, President of the Encino Propionas Association and Treasurer of the Encino Neighborhood Council. I wish to fully support Mayor Hahn's budget proposal for additional police. I've had business interests in high crime areas and have experienced firsthand how police have helped residents and business owners cope with gang and other criminal activities. This has included getting in the middle of possible armed conflict between police and gang members. Number one priority in this city is the fight against crime, and I urge you to support additional funding for the police department, which would result in an increase of over 300 police officers, more than would the recommendation of the council budget committee. L.A. has one of the lowest ratios of police to city population in the country, and anything you can do to improve this ratio will be doing what's right for the people of the city. I'm sure that funds can be shifted from lower priority needs to provide for additional police. Thank you for your kind attention.
Ms. Paige Miller.
Good morning, Council. Paige Miller, Co-Chair, Save Our Senior Leads. I'm sure that when it comes to public safety, that everyone in this room wants only the best. Positive steps in the LAPD have recently been made. Thanks to tremendous community outcry and the support of the Police Commission, Mayor Hahn, and the majority of this sitting council, senior lead officers have been reinstated. Community members and political offices have worked together with new leadership at the LAPD, and we've succeeded in turning the LAPD around and changing the philosophy of the LAPD and how it does business by embracing community policing. For the first time in four years, we've seen a major turnaround. Academy classes that recently were canceled are currently today filled. The retention of officers to stay with this department instead of fleeing to other departments has greatly improved, and we just don't want to lose the positive momentum that you all have been a part of. I looked up today on the Internet, New York has a force of 39,110, and we've never been able to reach our minimum basic common goal of 10,000 officers. Something is very wrong with this picture. It is hard, just as a community member, if you can step into the community's shoes, to read the paper every day, and to, one day, you see salary increases in the perks for administrative offices, for government offices, and for consultants and studies. And then the next day in the paper, we can't afford police services, firefighters, and paramedics, those that are on the front line of public safety. Current-day Baghdad is what happens when we don't support the public safety officers. I wish we could put a moratorium on population overgrowth, I wish we could put a moratorium on crime and terrorism, but we can't. I would encourage all sides to simply try to work together in the best interest of the community on this budget, and find a way to make it work to fund more firefighters and paramedics, the Counterterrorism Bureau, staffing for DNA labs, and the hiring of new officers while maintaining and protecting the current officers that we have. We appreciate all your efforts, we know this is a very difficult issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the comment for today on this item. Chair recognizes Ms. Sikowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to share with you, and I think all of our committee members do, the incredible work that Mr. Pacheco has done, not only all year, but particularly during the budget season, as we are now into it. And I also want to compliment the members of the city council, because for the first time in my memory, council members are much, much, much more alert today to what this budget is, what it might mean, and how we might go about it. There have been a lot of situations, a lot of comments about what the mayor's budget means and what our proposal from committee means. Let me put some facts out there. On July 1st, what is the difference between the mayor's budget and the recommendation budget of the committee? Will we start police classes July 1st? Both budgets, yes. What will happen in August? Both budgets, yes. We hire police officers, we pave our streets. Both budgets, September. We hire another class of police officers, we continue paving streets and doing everything else in the budget. October, November, December, we're on the same page. We hire officers if we hire what we expect. Both budgets will have 400 new officers hired from July 1st to December 31st. What happens January 1st? Our budget says there's money to hire more officers in a special unappropriated balanced account, but let's get a report back from the department. What's attrition been? Let's get a report back from the CAO, the CLA, the mayor, and the controller. What money do we have the right to expect that might likely to come in to fund the rest of the year? Are we on target? Are we still balanced budget? Why is that important to look at the January date? I sometimes keep old reports, as some of you know. Last year, this was the 02-03 proposed budget supplemental information. 02-03, a year ago today, when we were in this chamber, we had a five-year budget forecast. May '02, we were bringing in a balanced budget. Said zero, balanced. We were looking ahead the next year out with $25 million to the good. We started to spend. What happened after we adopted that budget July 1st, '02? We knew, the mayor knows, we all got a harsh reality. Sorry, folks, what we had been expecting, what we had been projecting, didn't happen. Come December, the CAO, the mayor, everyone said, "Our balanced budget is out of balance. We are going to end this year with a $250 million deficit." When did that happen? That happened November, December last year, when we had adopted a balanced budget with a projection to the good. Where are we a year forward? We're at, the mayor's saying we've got a balanced budget. We're at a five-year forecast, says we may be balanced this year. But next year, we adopt this budget today, we start next year 168 million in the hole. And what isn't in there, in that 168 million? Neighborhood prosecutors aren't counted. Add neighborhood prosecutors, that hole gets bigger. What's not in there in this budget projection? Consent decree. It's not in there. That's a deeper hole. We've heard about the consent decree. We've heard that the city council is holding up consent decree. Here is a list, members, of what we have done in this city council per the request of the department on consent decree. Bottom line, we have 294 authorized staff positions in the police department, 185 sworn officers, 109 civilians that have been authorized by this city council to be filled by the police department to do consent decree work in all of these positions. That's cost us $30 million. That's in the budget, we are doing it. Anyone saying we aren't hiring consent decree staff full force is not looking at 30 million and 300 officers. Are there some officers out there that we haven't put in consent decree? Yes. The difference right now between our report and the mayor's report are nine positions. There are nine positions in the auditing division of the police department. How many vacancies are there right now in the auditing division of the police department for consent decree? 11. 11 vacancies, but there's a request that we're not giving them nine more. Will those vacancies come in and show us that auditing is working, and those positions are going to be filled, and they won't even affect this budget, because we put 1.8 million aside last year and the year before to hire those positions that we're not touching. So, we get the information, those positions can be authorized. We authorized, this city council took out of the reorganization plan 18 Sergeant Twos. They're now able to be hired. We took them out of reorganization because we had the reorganization plan come forward in February. We said, "Hire them now, chief, you can have them, give them to the gang impact teams," which our members of the public are absolutely right. The most important thing in that department, in addition to officers on the street, are officers to fight gangs. We took it out of reorganization plan, we said, "We're not waiting, hire them now, you've got them." Those are some of the facts, members. Those are some of the facts we're going to have to deal with and reconcile come Monday when we start to vote on this. But look at the facts, look at the issues, and then let's make prudent decisions, because our first responsibility is fiscal responsibility, a viable budget that keeps this city moving and not in debt.
Mr. Weiss.
Wow. And how would you like to follow Cindy Misakowski and talk about the budget? You can't. You can't. That was a great presentation, and it illustrates really the central problem that we're having here in this overheated debate, because on the one hand, you have extraordinarily impressive rhetoric, and on the other hand, you have extraordinarily sobering facts, figures, dollars, and cents, and potentially, year after year, of red ink. The point of what the Budget Committee has proposed to this council is very unfortunate, but very simple and very necessary. We saw what those politicians did in Sacramento to the future of the state of California, and we cannot let that also be the future of the city of Los Angeles. Ms. Misakowski's presentation was dead-on, as was Mr. Pacheco's. I want to join Ms. Misakowski in thanking Mr. Pacheco for not just his leadership over the past couple of years on that committee, but what he did in managing this extraordinarily difficult process these past few weeks, a process that, for those who wish to look at the future, was filled with very harsh choices and very harsh realities. We on this committee chose to look at the future of the city. We gave the mayor's office countless opportunities to join us in a discussion about the future. We still want them at the table with us discussing the future of this city, because we all want to go into that future together and be successful. But cities must live within their means. There is no other way for a city to operate. The state of California, in the past few years, has gone from $20 billion in the black to $30 billion in the red, a $50 billion swing because of boom and boost budgeting. The city of New York presently has a $6 billion budget deficit, which is bigger than our entire budget altogether. We cannot let that happen to the future of public safety in our neighborhoods in Los Angeles. That's what our proposal from this committee is all about.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, that's absolutely true, but the city of New York, that the first time that the city of New York has had a deficit. I remember once when the Department of Transportation officer gave them some construction money for one of their subways, and there's such a shortfall in their budget, they got special permission to use construction money to balance their budget. What we're saying then compared to New York City and Los Angeles is that they don't manage the people's money as they should, and they have to call on the people in other parts of the U.S. to fund them, to finance them, to pay for the budget shortfall. Maybe they have too much to misuse. And let me just say that if you ask any community, what are the top priorities in that community, whether it be Los Angeles, Detroit, Chicago, wherever, it's going to say, "Public safety, education, jobs," whatever the case may be, they'll fluctuate. The fact that matters is that it doesn't suggest that we care less about providing our community's safety. In fact, when we got the first increase in pay, I personally used my salary to pay for foot patrol program in the hotspots areas in my district with foot patrol program in the hotspots areas in my district with the supportive police chief and others at that particular time. And others have done the same. Mr. Zine has done that since he's been here. We care about public safety for our city of Los Angeles. We also care about our libraries. We care about our parks, places where kids can go and recreate, and then we don't need to arrest them necessarily because they're doing something in a positive way. I just want you to know that whereas you speak and say, "Give us what you think they need," and yes, they do need libraries, and yes, they need law enforcement, but what you don't know is that we have a drop program here in the city of Los Angeles. What does that represent? That represents that a police officer who can retire and does in fact retire can draw his pension and stay on the job for another five years, and where we would previously anticipated that those officers would be leaving and there would be a shortfall by attrition, they're still on the job. And we had not have to revisit the budget and fill that gap. We just re-inherited the police officers from MTA that MTA used to pay for. It's going to come to another $30 million. That's more police officers on the job. We care about public safety also, but since that time, something else has happened, which you should be aware of. We now have police officers working three days a week. Face the facts, you don't get the same deployment of police officers. The fact of the matter is that you can have more police officers on patrol in their cars fighting criminals, crime, and they're working seven days a week. You don't have that. This council is not going to cut that deal. This council is going to say, "We'll have a balanced budget with what we have, give the police chief their started to deploy what he has that's available to him today." But what can be made available to him is have the police officers work five days a week or even four days a week, and you get more deployment. Utilize the police officers to the best of our ability to deploy them in such a way we can become really crime fighters. That is not being done. I want you to come back to this microphone and make that cry, and then somebody will perhaps listen, I hope. I already heard your message.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just also want to commend the committee on their work, having watched a number of hours on television, but also commend the council for its last 12 months of really keeping the city solvent. And I think it's important that as I've gone through the community and talked to a number of people, although public safety is number one in everybody's mind, and my heart certainly is in public safety, the community has sent a clear message to me that a viable city is not one that just has a police department. There's still an expectation that their parks and streets clean, alleys clean, shrubbery are, trees being trimmed. And so, when we look at this whole picture, it's important that not only do we keep in mind the city's treasury, but that we're responsible for prioritizing those services. In one of our recent meetings, somebody said, "We should find somebody in the state legislature to talk to and find out what went wrong in the state of California." I had an opportunity to talk to Tony Cardenas, who was the chair of the Budget Committee. And if there was one message he gave, it's that we're sitting at the same place the state was a year ago. And if we make the same mistakes that the state made, we'll be suffering maybe in a smaller dollar figure, but certainly suffering in years two and three down the road. And I don't think we could have a better testimony than a person that was actually involved in making the decisions and then referring back and reflecting that some of those decisions of putting money, one-time money in multiple-year projects, putting on personnel resources that they could not pay for, not contemplating salary increases, pension benefits are significant issues that we're also confronted with. And I think it's important that, again, we listen to that council very clearly. I think also it's been interesting, as I've watched the budget process and having been a general manager, that you've done a remarkable job when you think that you've closed a $26 million shortfall in the department budget by allowing the department to hire beyond what you approved last year. You've also filled another $30 million shortfall because of the MTA contract. That's an addition of 200 people on our payroll. So although they may not be a net increase in officers, you've assumed 200 more people on your payroll. And so I think it's important that people realize that there's been some significant dollar allocation to the police department that has apparently gone unnoticed and that really have not been commented on as we go farther into this budget year. But I think what's also important to realize that, as Mrs. Misakowski commented on what the budget means in comparison to the mayor's budget, even though on a step-by-step from July 1st to the end of the year, it's almost identical, in my judgment, having watched budgets for about 30 years, I think even the budget that is being proposed by the council is going to eventually appear, will prove to be over ambitious. To start a year with 500 people over what you expected last year and then propose five to six new classes between July and December with attrition probably going to drop because of the drop program and the 90-year pension, there is going to be some point within the next several months after the fiscal year that we will all determine that you cannot address those issues simultaneously. You cannot continue to pay for 500 more officers than you agreed to the year before and continue to hire. So at some point, you're going to end up with a situation that the classes are going to have to be reduced or stopped. And I think what's important to realize so that you do not waste all the money that we've used to prime the pump for recruitment, if all those classes are hired in the first six months and you stop hiring in the last six months, all of your efforts of the last two years will go by the wayside because you cannot have a start-and-stop hiring process in the city of L.A. Once you have gotten that pump prime, you may slow it down, but if you stop it, it takes at least a year to get it rolling again, well past what I would think your commitment would be. So I think when we look at this budget and we think about the real issues, there's a couple of disconnects that have come from my community. One, people are unwilling to, or have not been able to, address or understand a reduction in services for quality of life and an increase in taxes on their home, such as trash and dealing with the sewer. That's a total disconnect for them in the sense of why are we losing sidewalks, which many of them are waiting two to three years to get them repaired?
Mr. Parks.
And why aren't we getting street services? And my final comment, Mr. Chair, is that the other issue that's a disconnect is that we had in the year 2002, that we led the nation in homicides, had the largest increase in crime in the last decade, but yet the message going out is terrorism is our number one issue. And as people have said to me, Osama bin Laden has not committed one crime in the 8th District, has not been involved in a drive-by shooting, has not been involved in a robbery. And so with all of the resources the federal government have attached to intelligence operation, it would appear we would want to have more of an emphasis on local issues and local crime. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This is certainly one of the issues that we do have a difference of opinion on, and the reason I felt it was important to rise today and state my opinion is because I was the lone no vote on the Budget and Finance Committee to approve the CLA's recommendation. And I opposed the recommendation coming from my committee because, for me, it is about priorities, and for me, it is about what is our biggest responsibility in the city of Los Angeles. And for me, I have serious reservations about keeping all of these items in our unappropriated balance. And as we know, the unappropriated balance is the area where, when we had, we set aside the money, but then to spend those dollars, it is a matter of coming then before the Budget and Finance Committee and then becoming before the full city council to make those appropriations. I believe, as I know everyone does, we just have a difference of opinion in how to get there, but I do believe that public safety is our priority. I believe it begins with public safety and I believe it ends with public safety. And when I say public safety, I mean hiring more police officers, I mean adding the 10th men to, in the fire department, I mean the reorganization of the police department in terms of what we're trying to do in terms of anti-terrorism. I mean, public safety is about our first responders. And for me, I learned this from Hal Berenson early on when he said, "Janice, do you understand what a zero-based budget is?" And he went on to explain that a zero-based budget is, you fund what is important to you and everything else comes second. And that's how I believe about this. I believe we fund our public safety items, and for me, that means removing them from the unappropriated balance and funding them through the general fund. And we do have money in this year's budget to fund our public safety items. And I think that's what's important, and I believe if, when December comes and we think these dire predictions are coming true, if we believe we have more facts, then at that point, I have no problem with letting the Budget and Finance Committee do its work, which what we have been doing since I've been elected for the last two years under the leadership of Nick Pacheco. Every single week, and committee members, you know this to be true, we have before us our revenues, we have before us our projections, we have what we're expending, what we're taking in, and we make tough decisions every week on whether or not we can lift up the hiring freeze for specific positions. And I think that is our responsibility, and that is the message I believe we need to send to all those who are looking to Los Angeles, to turn its image around, to make us the safest city in America. I don't want to be called the murder capital of the country anymore. I want us to focus on this year and make sure that our recruitment stays high, that our attrition stays low. We are on a roll in terms of our police department, and we all know that. And I think if someone was out there wanting to know which city they wanted to come to to apply for the police department, I think they're going to want to come to a city who says, "We will fund hiring 720 officers and everything else comes second." And sure, I love parks, and sure, I love libraries, and sure, I love fixing our streets and trimming our trees, but I'll tell you what, in this day and age, I think none of that does matter. I don't think it matters building new libraries if the streets aren't safe. I'm trying to attract people to come in and build market-rate housing in San Pedro, and we're trying to redevelop the waterfront so we have tourists that come and spend their money in Los Angeles, which adds to our general fund. And none of that matters if we can't make sure that our residents, first of all, are safe. And I think not taking these items out of the appropriated balance and funding them upfront sends the wrong message, sends a wrong message to our police officers, sends a wrong message to our fire department, and sends a wrong message to all Angelenos that everything we've been saying up until this time is not true. I want us to put our money where our mouth is, and for me, we can fund it. To say that spending this money puts us out of balance is not true. We have the money in this budget to do what we need to do, in my opinion, to make the city safe. So I will still hopefully move, hopefully be part of introducing a motion that will take the public safety items out of the unappropriated balance, leaving all the other things in there where we can do, week by week, evaluations of where we are in the city. So I think that's the right way for us to go. My priority is keeping our residents safe, and I think that's what's most important here.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thanks very, thank you very much, Mr. President. I have several priorities. Obviously, I want to give kudos to the committee and to the mayor for putting it on the table in the first place. There's nothing wrong with public discourse, this is what democracy is all about, and it's honest, candid, direct, forthright conversation on the record. That's fine. What is a waste of everyone's time is rhetoric, and rhetoric is not something in which I'm interested. I'm interested in looking at the numbers and remembering why I was sent here. Couple of points, as I've said to all parties involved, I need something to say to the constituents, the residents of the 9th, that's substantive, that's real, and something that they can count on, especially in the context of having a conversation about raising fees. And my question is, how can I, how can I go to my own constituents and say, "We're expanding homeland security and yet you suffer from domestic terrorism every day." I need to be able to explain to them the nexus, how that will improve the quality of their life on a daily basis. And I also need to be able to explain to them, if we here in the 9th have to take a cut in services, sidewalk repair, curb repair, street paving, tree trimming, and you haven't had your tree trimmed in 15 years, you've never had your sidewalk fixed, you've never had your curb repaired, I need to be able to explain to them that we're going to take a hit now and it's going to be hard, but don't you worry because the police that we're going to get are going to go where they're most needed, and where they're most needed is where people are getting killed in the 8th and the 9th and the 10th, which in the last 90 to 120 days account for over 40% of the murders in the city of Los Angeles. Now, there will be other parts of the city that will argue, "Well, we need more police here because we've got cruising," or, you know, things like that, or higher concentration of liquor stores. But I can tell you in my book and by my value system, when people's lives are at risk and that people are getting shot walking down the street, going to get a hamburger, walking to their car after a family gathering with a baby in their arms, to me, that's the number-one priority. And I want to be able to tell my constituents that the police will go where they're needed, and if I can't have that kind of an answer and that kind of a guarantee, I will have to look askance at what is before me.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Before I recognize Mr. Holden for a second time, just a reminder to the members of the public that this is just the formal presentation of the Budget and Finance Committee's recommendation to the council. Action on the budget will not take place today, rather, it will take place in a special meeting of the city council this Monday. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we are one of the finest libraries in the city of Los Angeles or anywhere in the state of California, our Central Library. We're proud of the Central Library. Ms. Hahn, I want to tell you that there was a time we could have lost that Central Library on a sale-leaseback program to balance the budget. She's not listening, so she'd never learn this one. The fact of the matter is that Ms. Hahn gave us some good information. Mr. Chief, I mean, Councilman Parks, Ms. Hahn gave us some good information. We, I'm going to invite the public, I'm going to invite the public to contact my office and other members of the council and let them tell us whether or not they want us to close our libraries, our parks, other recreation facilities for hiring 300 police officers. Let them tell us that. And I, well, no, I, well, you do have to. At some point, you have to do that. Cut the hours. We used to have summer job programs, about 17,000 individual students and kids. With this program, we have 1,000 maybe. What's going to happen to the other 16,000 kids who had summer jobs? There was a lady who was the mayor of Chicago, was it Jane, Jane Burns? And Jane Burns did some things that they're trying to do in this budget. When the snow came and they didn't have the snowplows, they couldn't remove the snow, that was used as an issue to vote her out of office because they could not provide those services. And the thing that we ought not do is cut the services, and not at all. I tell you that, once you do it, the public will say, "Yes, we're still not safe." I remember a guy, his name is Chief Gates. Chief Gates came to me once, he says, "I would like to put a measure in the ballot where we could raise all the money we need to provide for public safety, have our own budget item." And I said, "Yes, chief, that's good, and I will support it." But however, once the people begin to pay more taxes, believing that the city will be absolutely safe, and then discover that they're not safe, no matter how much money you spend, that somebody is going to be criminalized. Then he said, "You know, you make a point." I said, "Leave that responsibility with the council and leave the blame with the council." The fact of the matter is that there's not enough money in the vaults, in the banks, anywhere to guarantee that you'll have an entire safe community at all times.
Mr. Holden.
Some individual will be criminalized, and I'm not prepared to, Kenny Hahn always said, "Nate, you gotta..." said, "Nate, you've got to resurface the street, fill the potholes, trim the trees, and do all those things, and to the extent, provide for public safety." Yes, public safety is important, but you can't do it at the expense of all the other things that need to be done in this city. Public safety right now, the budget is 60, 70% of the Los Angeles budget right now goes to public safety, and the public has a right to know that.
Let me ask you to conclude, Mr. Holden. Thank you very much.
Says to listen to his son and daughter.
Other members wishing to be heard at this time? Other members wishing to be heard, seeing none? Then this will conclude this item for today. And again, colleagues and members of the public, following the budget process, we will have a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council this Monday, May 19th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, if they're still with us, we do have speaker cards from, I believe it's Monica Peterson, Larry Green, Duke Russell, Sylvia Blackstone, and others to follow. Is Ms. Peterson with us? Please come forward at this time. Please come forward to the microphone. This is your time.
Good afternoon, council. I've been told I only have two minutes. I do have a very important document here that I've spoken to several officials, and the officials that I have spoken to have read my documents and had agreed that I should come to the council. I've spoken to Mr. Zine's office, Yvonne Breitweig Burke's office, and lastly, it was Senator Sheila Keel. Unfortunately, everyone has been very kind in reading this and have suggested there should be a solution. And to make a long story short, I was asked to come to Councilman LeBarge, I notice he's left, and I'm trying to get an appointment with him to solve this. The people that I have aforementioned have said that it should be solved, but apparently because of protocol, I have to take this to LeBarge. And I would like to ask, if it's appropriate, the President, to see that I get an appointment with Councilman LeBarge.
Okay.
I would appreciate that immensely.
Thank you for being here. If you'd like to share a copy of your transmittal with the guards, we'd be more than happy to receive it. And if Mr. LeBarge has a staff member here who can speak to this woman, we'd appreciate you coming forward at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
Again, I'm going to set my stopwatch for the allotted time, which will not exceed 90 seconds, maybe two minutes, but not two minutes. First of all, my name is Melrose Larry Green. I haven't been here for many, many, many months. I want to congratulate Councilman Parks, Chief Parks, as you say, Chief Councilman Parks, for your new job. It's a better job than your other job. But, on a serious note, I was reading, I wasn't going to come here today, but I read this morning's L.A. Times, big story, "Hahn Chief Rip Council Overfunding." Editorial in today's Daily News, there's a little quote, "They should lay off legions of useless bureaucrats who do little more than pay the city payroll. It's time for Hahn and Padilla to put an end to their phony debate and let the real debate about overhauling city government begin." That's today's Daily News. This is today's L.A. Times. Hence, Melrose Larry Green shows up here.
60 seconds.
Excuse me?
60 seconds.
That's right. Thank you. Now, we have a great police chief here. We all worked very hard to get this new police chief. We had a big national search. We also have a great 38-year member of the LAPD on the City Council, Chief Parks. I propose, here's a revolutionary idea, that Chief Parks and Chief Bratton work closely together, pool their efforts, pool their years of experience to solve the public safety problem in the city of L.A. I was never an opponent of Chief Parks, no matter what anybody says. I've always liked Chief Parks, but Chief Bratton is great. And we have to read today's paper and see what he says about the City Council. He's the police chief, you're not, you're the City Council. Doesn't matter if it's a strong mayor or weak mayor. I read Pacheco's quote in today, "We council, strong mayor." Doesn't matter. We're all in this thing together, and let's solve the problems and quit bellyaching. So I want to see Chief Parks have lunch with Chief Bratton. Thank you very much. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you. Larry Green. Duke Russell, are you still with us? Please come forward. Mr. Russell will be followed by Sylvia Blackstone, Robert Schwartz, and Jim Stewart.
Members of the City Council, thank you for letting me speak here. I'm here again on behalf of thousands of L.A. USD students and parents and teachers who want the land at L.A. City College used for education in place of a gigantic, foolish golf-driving range now being built. We think the money to buy out the investor can come from the $100 million at L.A. City College from the $147 million of the Prop. A bond issue. We also think that foundations and corporations and individuals interested in public education will step forward with the money to buy out this investor now, before he completes the building, which will cost more and more money to the taxpayers. 6,000 alumni at Hollywood High School, where I am a director, on the board of directors, I'm sorry, but they are being kept informed about the golf range and the playing fields at L.A. City College. Tomorrow, there is a rally at L.A. City College. You are all invited. I left information for you, 10:30 to 12:30. I would like you to come and see in person this gigantic golf-driving range and the playing fields that are going to be destroyed in order to put up a science-technology building, where we think the science-technology building should go up where the golf range is. That way, you save millions of dollars. Also, you save the playing fields to help the police in this city, where the kids have been playing on those fields for many, many years, since 1929. That will help the police. That will help the kids grow up and go on to high school and college.
Thank you very much.
So please, help us. Go on record, go on record to say that you are in favor of the commercial golf-driving range being removed now for education of L.A. USD high school graduates.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you very much.
Is Ms. Blackstone with us? Sylvia Blackstone? If not, then let's proceed to hear from Robert Schwartz or Jim Stewart.
We're going to have him speak first, thanks. Thank you. Dear friends of the urban forest.
Your name, sir?
My name is Robert Schwartz, Dana Robert Schwartz. I'm a salvage dealer.
Go ahead.
I'm a neighbor of the Larchmont area, and I'm here to call your attention to something that happened last week. It's been a week now since an old redwood tree was cut down, and I'm here to memorialize that. I came home last Friday from work, and I saw my new neighbors cutting down a beautiful, giant, 80-foot old redwood tree, and I was shocked, and I called the city, and I found out there's nothing they could do about it. They told me, in fact, "Is it a native oak tree?" And I said, "No, it's a redwood tree." I thought that meant something. Turns out, there's no ordinance to prohibit that if it's on private property, and it was my neighbor's right. Now, here's the property in the picture. I took some pictures. It was a beautiful, giant redwood tree, if you could just imagine one like you'd see at Yosemite. 80 feet tall, about 100 years old, five foot wide in diameter, and it's sitting, unfortunately, on the wrong side of the sidewalk, according to this city. Now, I called the State Forestry Department, and they told me, "A lot of municipalities are taking trees like this when they're so close to the sidewalk." And they take the position that these trees are part of the urban landscape, and that they're then protected by the street tree division. And in fact, a lot of cities have ordinances now protecting all kinds of trees that are on private property, not just redwoods. But what I would like to say, most importantly, is that you can see that this tree, unfortunately, is just a few feet from the sidewalk. And this tree was historic, and it had great significance to the local area. It was a treasure. And everybody in the neighborhood knew this tree, so they were totally shocked, like I was. And when I found out that only oak trees are protected by a review and permit process, I said, "This is wrong. Why oak trees and not all other large old trees?" Because I knew that my neighbors would feel just like I did. And in fact, I was amazed at the outpouring of support. That night, I canvassed my neighborhood. We got a lot of petitions signed.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
And we ended up holding a rally, which was very successful last week. We were on TV, we got a lot of coverage. I've since collected over 400 signatures from local businesses and residents. I spoke at the local Rotary Club on Wednesday, at the Wilshire Rotary Club. I got a lot of support there. And basically, this has started a groundswell movement of support. People are really concerned about their trees, and I know this is an issue that you'd like to all do something about, but it's really not high up there on the agenda like crime. But the truth is, is that people really are concerned about preserving the urban forest and the urban landscape, and they realize this is one resource that they really, we all need to protect.
Thank you very much. I'm going to have to ask you to conclude at this time.
Just thank you and say that please go to our website. We have a website at www.thisland.org. It was made for me. It's one of the nice things people are doing for us. Go there and find out more about this issue and how you can help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blackstone, if you're still here, and Mr. Stewart, if you can, why don't you join her at the podium? Want to come and join her at the podium? I think you're here on the same issue. Go ahead. Ma'am?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, honored council members, I'm Silva Blackstone. I'm a certified arborist. I live in 1867 North Avenue 51, Los Angeles. Imagine this sentinel tree in the neighborhood. It's 70 years old, it's 80 feet tall, it's as straight as an arrow, it touches the sky, its roots touch the earth, it's three and a half feet across, it touches our heart, and it reaches out, and it's a place for our spirits to rest. And this tree is gone. It's nothing but chunks of red wood that got hauled off in a trunk, in a truck. And what we are asking for here is to start a process, oh, I forgot to tell you, I made a mark on my finger. This is the size of a redwood seed, and it grew to a tree that huge in 70 years from this little tiny seed. I think we need a process, and we need to take a timeout before we cut such a tree, and take a timeout to see if there's a way to harvest such a tree if we can't save it. A tree could have been turned into lumber. A time for the owner, a timeout for the owner to hear the neighbors, and maybe to have a change of heart. This owner had a change of heart when it was too late. She saw the error of what she had done. She was sorry, but she didn't know what the tree was worth. The urban forest has many, many benefits, dollar benefits. 80% of the urban forest is private trees, such as this one. There's no protection. 20% of the urban forest is public trees, and a protection mechanism will be built on the current urban forest program. So the last thing I'd like to ask is that more and more cuts be made to the current levels of care, so that when we go to protect some of our neighborhood trees and to educate people, we'll have something to build that structure on. And right now, that structure is being whittled away.
Thank you.
So I ask your support for our city trees.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stewart.
I have a picture of the stump, I'm sure you've seen it, and who do I have an article about the value of trees?
You can hand that over to the guards.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I'm Jim Stewart, representing the dozens of organizations involved in Earth Day, Los Angeles. We're clear that trees are a quality-of-life issue for all residents of Los Angeles. Treepeople.org has a great website. They list 20 reasons why we should plant and defend our trees. Trees clean the air of pollutants. Trees provide oxygen for us to breathe. Trees combat the greenhouse effect. Trees cool the streets and the city. Trees conserve energy for air conditioning, lest, trees save water. Trees help prevent water pollution and help recharge the groundwater. Trees prevent soil erosion. Trees shield children from ultraviolet rays and prevent skin cancer. Trees provide food, avocados, oranges. Trees add unity and pride to a neighborhood. Trees provide a canopy and habitat for wildlife, and trees increase property values by at least 15%. It's clear that there are far too many trees being cut down by private owners. They don't even seem to know these facts. It's up to us to educate the people of this city, and we are hoping that we can get your support in terms of an ordinance that would help to protect these trees. We think that there's a way to do it, likely, we have the oak ordinance, we have the historic tree ordinance, there's got to be a way to do this, and we're depending upon you, and we're looking forward to working with you to protect these trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and this concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, June 11th, to arrive late for personal business, and Friday, June 20th, for city business. Those both meet council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, May 30th, to leave at 11:15 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, May 20th, and Wednesday, May 21st, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Parks is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, members. Are there any announcements? Any announcements today? Mr. Holden for an announcement.
There's going to be an election Tuesday, May 20th, in two districts, I believe, the 12th, Mr. Berenson's district, and in my district, the 10th council district, historical event. It's an open race. We haven't had an open race like that in 16 years. So it's an opportunity for the interested parties, the voters in the district, to participate in their selection.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Encouraged in to do so.
Other announcements today? If not, are there adjourning motions today? Please rise for adjourning motions. Members of the public, please stand. Adjourning motions. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Galanter asked if she could join with me on this in recognizing and adjourning in memory of a civic leader named Hugo Francis from Westchester. He died Tuesday, and his services were actually this morning. He was 82 years old when he suffered a stroke in his home on Tuesday. He was a chemical engineer who worked at the Chevron refinery in El Segundo, although he'd been retired. But he has been instrumental for many, many years, since 1950, when he moved into Westchester, in innumerable community projects. The most significant thing that he did was become a founder of the Westchester Family YMCA, and he served as honorary mayor of Westchester as well in 1990. But his love and his passion was for the Westchester Y. He helped organize the events and the programs, he sold the Christmas trees at Christmas time, he got involved in pancake breakfasts, raising money every which way he could, and ultimately was significantly a backer in the building, of the building now that is there, for the Westchester Family YMCA. He also found time to be an active member in the Chamber of Commerce in Westchester. He was an active member in the Kentwood Home Guardians, which is the homeowners' organization that he belonged to, and active in his church, the Covenant Presbyterian Church. He was truly a well-rounded citizen in Westchester. He truly dedicated countless hours. Every hour that he wasn't working was dedicated back to his family and the Y and his other programs. The current president, chairman of the board of YMCA, Mike Arias, said, "Hugo Francis is a hero to me." And I think Hugo Francis is a hero to many, many in Westchester. He will be missed. He raised two children with his late wife, Tommy. They both survived him. But he really is a true, not only a founder, but a continuing mentor and member and steward. But he really is a true, not only a founder, but a continuing mentor and member and supporter, backbone of the Westchester YMCA and his many organizations.
Other tributes? Mr. Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Rosemary Neese. This pride ninety-year-old passed away this past Tuesday morning. Mrs. Neese, born October sixth, nineteen twelve, was born in what is now called Chauvin, next door to her husband, Louis. An amazing, long, and productive life. She truly was a link to an early Los Angeles, when Broadway was still a dirt road, when today's Chinatown was a central community for Italians, and where she and Louis began their work in the grocery store business known as Galcos. By nineteen fifty-five, Galcos was moved to Highland Park, but for the next forty-plus years, it has become its own local institution and destination for visitors from all over the world. And it is so because of itself has become a museum for all the soda pops that were ever produced in the United States. Mrs. Neese was dear to her family and the community. She had a wonderful smile and genuine way to greet her friends that were also her customers. Her cooking, and especially her lasagna, was a cherished meal by everyone who had the honor to experience it. As recently as earlier this year, you can still catch her working in the store after almost sixty-five years of managing a wonderful mom-and-pop business. After recently celebrating her seventieth, yes, seventieth wedding anniversary, she reflected on all the changes that she witnessed in the City of Angels and leaned on her husband and said, "We've had a good life, Pop. All of our lives were a little better because of you, Miss Neese. You'll be lovingly missed." In addition to her husband, she is survived by her sister, Baldina Selovich of Glendale, a brother, Charles Dorita of Hemet, sons Frank of Corona de Mar, John and Michael, both of Pasadena, and Louis of Irvine, seven grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. Galcos became one of the subjects for the Golden Treasures of California with our state cheerleaders, Hugh Howser. And we've had John here to celebrate what we call the original suburbs. And Miss Rosemary, Rosemary Neese will be missed for everything that she's done for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Arias. Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the rule. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel thirty-five.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.